Continued comfort for those that suffered losses last week in the storm, particularly down along the coast, a lot of property damage. We pray for the family that lost one of their family members in Wilson. And if you will continue to comfort all of those that were impacted. We ask for your guidance this evening as we deliberate on matters that are important to the growth of Garner. And we ask for your guidance and wisdom in the decisions that we make. We ask for these things in your name. Amen.
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 Thank you, Mr. Carson. Uh, it is time for our adoption of our agenda. Are there any items that need to be adjusted or changed? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve our agenda?
I'll, I'll move that we approve the agenda for this evening.
Mr. Vaughn, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Carson, a second.
There's a motion on the floor to adopt the agenda. I'll call the vote. Gina Avent.
Aye.
Mariah Bishop.
Aye.
Ralph Carson.
Aye.
Philip Jefferson.
Aye.
Cherry Phillips.
Aye.
Michael Voiland.
Aye.
That's six ayes, the agenda is adopted.
Thank you, thank you. Um, uh, it is time to review our meeting minutes and vote on our meeting minutes from our last meeting from July eighth. Are there any items that need to be updated or revised per your review? If there are none, do we have a motion to approve our meeting minutes from July eighth?
I'll move that we approve the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Aver. We have a motion and a second.
Uh, there's a motion on the floor to adopt the presented minutes. I'll call the vote. Gina Avent.
Aye.
Mariah Bishop.
Aye.
Ralph Carson.
Aye.
Philip Jefferson.
Aye.
Jihan Hodges. Oh, I'm sorry. Cherry Phillips.
Aye.
And Michael Voiland.
Aye.
That's six ayes, the minutes are adopted.
Okay, we have adopted our minutes. Thank you so much. Um, we are moving into our old and new business. Um, uh, first case on our list, CZ MP two-two-one-three, thirteen oh-six Crete Road.
Yes, thirteen, um, the applicant is not here this evening, but they did submit an email to us formally requesting that it be continued again while they continue to work on some adjustments and new ideas.
Okay, okay, all right. We need to make a motion to...
I have a question for Mr. Treisenberg. Um, this, this is the one that's been tabled many times.
Yeah.
Is there... What's the implications of not continuing to table it forward?
Um, not continuing it to a date certain at this point would just mean that we would have to re-advertise, um, so it would no longer appear on the agenda. Uh, if, and that's assuming that they would move forward with the same, basically the same proposal. Uh, if they change their proposal, though, they'll likely be starting over from the public hearing at the very beginning. Um, so staff doesn't mind, um, if we continue it one more month. Um, but if it, if it looks, we'd, we'd, we're looking to get some direction from them by the time, uh, September rolls around.
Okay. Any other questions, Rob? Mr. Treisenberg? Do we have a motion to approve that continuation of that case?
I will move that we consider continuation of case review of CZ MP dash two-two-dash-one-three until next month's meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. We have a motion and a second.
There's a motion on the floor to continue to next month's meeting, and I'll call the vote. Gina Avent.
Aye.
Mariah Bishop.
Aye.
Ralph Carson.
Aye.
Philip Jefferson.
Aye.
Cherry Phillips.
Aye.
Michael Voiland.
Aye.
The motion to continue passes.
Okay, thank you. We have continued that case. Also, we'll move on to our next case, CZ two-three-zero-two-three-four-one-two-three-five-oh-eight Benson Road. It's our...
Good evening, Chair, and member, Plating Commission members and members of the public. It's good to see you all this evening. My name is Erin Joseph, and I will present to you the rezoning case, CZ two-three-oh-two. Essentially what that means is it does not contain a master plan, a visual, um, that will illustrate a site layout. Um, it is, um, basically a list of profit conditions and a narrow list of permitted uses. So you won't, will not see a, a master plan for this particular type of rezoning, conditional rezoning. So the applicant, Collier Marsh of Parkapo, um, has submitted their request on behalf of the property owners for, again, a tier-one conditional district rezoning. Um, it's forty-nine point five-one acres. Uh, the request is to rezone from highway district and residential R thirty. Those districts are within Wake County's jurisdiction, um, to commercial mixed-use, CMX three C, excuse me, C three-ten conditional. Um, the site is located at thirty-four-twelve and thirty-five-oh-eight Benson Road. And you have the map on the screen that shows the site, the larger parcel, and then thirty-five-oh-eight is just that smaller corner there. So the zoning is just south of Garner's current ETJ in the urban service area, and it is within Wake County's Highway District and Residential Thirty District. Uh, those districts intend for low density, and the highway district does include low-density residential with a wide range of, uh, com, uh, non-residential uses. And currently, the site is vacant. And the R thirty zoning surrounds the site on three sides, but you also have the general business district and more of the highway district to the north and the south of the site. So the site does fall within a community activity center. Um, Benson Road or NC fifty is an arterial roadway that connects the Garner Town Core on its north end and south through rural lands to ten-ten Road, um, which is, uh, the center of the Community Activity Center. And further on to the future five-forty, there is a Regional Employment Activity Center as well. NCDOT reports last that the traffic count for this portion of Benson Road is nineteen-thousand four-hundred-and-ninety-nine annual average daily trips, and that was in twenty-twenty-three. Um, so Benson Road, this section is currently, um, at capacity, but with continued widening, capacity will increase. Um, this, uh, portion of Benson Road also lacks separate infrastructure for pedestrian and cyclists. So the proposal of this, of this rezoning, um, like to rezone to commercial mixed-use conditional, uh, the applicant has narrowed the possible uses down to thirty-three out of a total of sixty, and they have proffered thirty conditions outside of the permitted uses. Um, what you see highlighted in the gold color, um, are updates to the conditions since it was, um, last before council. So they've gone and made some, um, s- some adjustments to the conditions. Um, namely, if a traffic signal is not required at the property's, uh, Benson Road entrance, um, where Southern Trace subdivision here, um, the applicant and property owner, um, will install a, um, a signal if it is warranted and sufficient right-of-way exists. Um, this, the signal will be constructed by the property owner. They have, um, conditioned a minimum of forty percent of the site shall be open space. And as used in this condition, open space area includes passive, um, preserved tree cover and the project boundary buffers. Um, and within this open area, the following additional commitment shall apply. Uh, a minimum of sixty percent of the open space shall be contiguous, and the contiguous areas can include any open space, um, bisectioned by public rights of way of streets, provided that a pedestrian crosswalk provides access to that open space. Um, there will also be a minimum of twenty percent of the site, or half of the required open space will be preserved, uh, for tree cover. Other conditions include a forty-five-foot landscape buffer, um, shall be provided at the property's southern boundary, where the property abuts single-family residential, um, which is wider than what the U D O calls for. Um, and within this buffer, a five-foot-tall berm shall be provided. Um, a minimum of one playfield in the residential portion of the property, um, and they have updated this condition, um, is from feedback from the public hearing to twenty thousand square feet. Um, and the open playfield shall be a minimum of one hundred thirty feet wide and not sixty. Um, and this open play area shall count towards the project's open area. An area two shall include a playground unless it is developed for a fifty-five-plus age-restricted or residential group care. Seven thousand square feet of area shall be provided with the, and within this space of community gathering space, uh, within this space, a minimum of seven benches, public art installation, a minimum of a five-hundred-square-foot flowerbed, uh, shall be provided, and the community, again, gathering space will count towards the project's open space area. In the non-residential buildings fronting Benson Road, there shall have a maximum of two bays of parking with one drive aisle located between those buildings and Benson Road. In an area one residential buildings fronting Benson Road shall not have any parking located between those buildings and Benson Road. Um, and no more than, in area one, no more than fifty percent of the Benson Road frontage shall have parking between the buildings and the street. The landscaping shall be native species, at least a minimum of seventy-five percent, and also will include pollinator-friendly plantings. Um, there will be, uh, three freestanding pole signs, um, up to four square feet in area, um, to identify the wooded or natural, um, conditions and environmentally sensitive areas. Along the adjacent wetlands and the limits of disturbance, the developer will install a double-silt fencing. And all primary buildings shall be designed to meet the requirements of green building standards, um, such as LEED, Energy Star, Breen, Green Globes, uh, Globes, NGBS, and Green Guard. The, um, applicant, uh, has also committed to, um, installing green, uh, stormwater infrastructure, um, such as bioretention areas, permeable pavement systems, uh, rainwater harvesting systems, green roofs, um, planter boxes, um, and incorporating G S I measures within the project. Does not preclude the ability to use above or below-ground stormwater management devices. Uh, there will be an internal sidewalk and pathway system of a development, and that will connect all areas within the development, and the system will connect at least two locations to the future Benson public multipath use, multi-use path. Um, there shall be a maximum of six-hundred-and-fifty multi-residential units, and the multifamily buildings, uh, will have interior corridors and shall be elevator-served. They have provided minimum multifamily amenity square footages, um, so for clubhouse, um, up to five thousand square feet if they're greater than three-hundred-and-forty units, a pool with a minimum of one thousand square foot and up to fifteen hundred, and a dog park as well at five hundred square feet. Um, all the residential buildings in area one and three shall be a minimum of three stories and a maximum of five. There, for the multifamily buildings, there shall be, uh, no vinyl siding. Uh, the siding shall vary in color, uh, there will have mason, masonry components, uh, will be at least twenty percent per building, and accessory buildings may only have a masonry wainscot of at least thirty inches high. Um, foundations shall be slab-on-grade with masonry covering on any exposed slab, and facade plans shall have offsets, uh, so as not to allow a continuous run, uh, over twenty-four feet with a minimum of one foot of depth. And the projecting eaves and breaks shall have a minimum of twelve inches of depth on all sides, and at full build-out, there shall be a minimum of twenty-five thousand square feet of non-residential uses. Non-residential buildings shall meet the following architectural's guidelines. Uh, the architectural treatments, uh, such as, um, bearing roof forms, facade articulation, breaks in roof, and walls with texture materials shall be incorporated to add visual interest. Uh, large expanses of blank walls greater than twenty-five feet in length or height shall be broken up with windows or other architectural features. Um, roof features may include flat roofs with parapet, hip roofs, canopies, or awnings with metal material. Windows and storefront glazing shall be divided to either square or vertical in proportion so that each section is taller than it is wide. Um, non-residential buildings in area one, um, shall have transparencies that meet or exceed, um, the Unified Development Code ordinance, um, and their primary frontage will meet or exceed fifty percent transparency. Other ground-floor public frontages will meet or exceed thirty-three percent transparency, and upper story will exceed twenty percent transparency. Also, non-residential buildings, at least fifty-five percent of the primary building materials shall be brick, stone, decorative, scored, concrete, masonry units, of fiber cement panels, um, and vinyl siding shall be prohibited. The non-residential building facades, uh, shall exceed the articulation requirements of our Unified Development Ordinance. Um, all non-residential buildings and their suite entrances shall be covered by awnings with a minimum of twenty, uh, or canopies with a minimum of twenty square feet, or entrances shall be, uh, covered walkways adjacent to the primary facade. Um, the non-residential buildings shall, uh, provide outdoor gathering and dining spaces or patios, and these outdoor spaces shall be a minimum size of ten percent of the building's first floor, um, that cert, that they serve, and shall be adjacent to or within one hundred feet. Um, patio shall be constructed of masonry pavers, um, decorative colored or stamped concrete, artificial turf, turf, and other rubber surfen, surfacing. And these outdoor gathering dining spaces shall include atmospheric architectural lighting, um, partial covering to provide shade, and twenty lineal feet of permanent seating for each one thousand square feet of patio or gathering, um, dining space area. At the public hearing, uh, council, um, added that they would like to see, uh, an affordable housing component, and so the applicant has added that as a condition as well. And so a minimum of five percent of multifamily units constructed within the development shall be provided as affordable housing units. The affordable housing units shall have rents that are affordable for households earning one hundred percent of the U S Department of Housing and Urban Development, um, area median income, as stipulated by the most recently published North Carolina Housing Finance Agency Low Income Housing Tax Credit Multifamily Tax Subsidy Program. Um, the income and rent limits for the Raleigh, North Carolina M S A area are defined by the U S Department of HUD and updated annually. The affordable housing unit shall be restricted to an affordability period of thirty years, um, from the date of issuance of the first multifamily residential certificate of occupancy, uh, for the, uh, and for the development. Following completion of the affordable period, um, the, uh, condition shall expire, and the property owner shall be relieved of all ob, obligations set forth in this affordable housing condition. And the units will be, uh, freely marketed and leased at market-free rates. And so that was, um, all of the conditions that the applicant has committed to. And we'll move on to the transportation. Um, so a T I A was required for this rezoning request. Um, it was completed in twenty-twenty-three, but it was updated this year in June to for reflect, um, uh, the updated, um, non-residential square footage from twenty thousand to twenty-five thousand, and also to reflect, uh, the, um, applicant's six-hundred-and-fifty maximum of, uh, of residential units. Um, and so the traffic impact analysis, um, reveals that five-thousand-five-hundred-and-twenty-four new one-way average daily trips will be generated from this particular, uh, request, a development. Um, during the A M. peak hours, it is expected to have eighty-seven trips in and one hundred ninety trips out. During the peak hours, P M., uh, two-hundred-and-forty-one trips are expected in and one hundred-and-sixty-three trips are expected out. Um, the congestion management unit of N C D O T has required a dedicated northbound left-turn lane and taper on NC fifty with one hundred feet of storage at site, and dedicated southbound right-turn lane and taper on NC fifty with one hundred feet of storage at site access. And you also see the, uh, signal, traffic signal that, um, has also been added at the Southern Trace, um, and the access point for this development at NC fifty. Again, this is not a master plan tier-two request, however, uh, the applicant has provided a general layout of the site and, um, the breakdown of the areas that you hea, heard me reference in those conditions. Area one, approximately eleven-point-eight-seven acres. Area two, ten-point-three acres. And area three, four-point-three acres. So in reviewing this request, some observations that we have made as staff, that the layering of a community activity center with a mixed-use area, uh, supports development that is mixed-use and will serve the broader economic entertainment and housing needs in the community. But the applicant conducted three neighborhood meetings, and per our, our development ordinance, one was required. So they did, um, speak to the adjacent property owners on two additional occasions. Um, the latest was on July twenty-third. They had seventeen attendees. Uh, they had one earlier in this year in the spring on April twenty-second, where there were twenty-seven attendees. And the first, last year, August twenty-eighth, there were forty attendees. As we looked at this request, um, with consistency with our comprehensive land use plan, our Garner Forward Plan, eleven growth framework criteria were evaluated. Eight were strongly consistent. One received a split modest. One was modestly inconsistent, and one strongly inconsistent. And we'll note that the zoning district and transportation choices, uh, criteria were rated negatively due to the commercial mixed-use, uh, district not being listed on the character area crosswalk. Um, and we have had conversations, um, that, you know, this, to, um, and maybe in the future going forward to add C M X to, um, as, as a listed use within, um, the mixed-use typology. And also, um, the transportation choice, um, isn't, is a pre-existing condition, and therefore did not result in the lowest rating. As we looked at the land use and community character consistency, we felt that sixteen criteria were determined to be applicable or possible to meaningfully address the request. Um, we had... Um, we had one strongly consistent and eleven modestly consistent. And there were four split um that were due to the absence of any conditional language for us to evaluate it against. And so overall, in the absence of any strong non-supporting criteria and a strong level of consistency with the growth framework um outside of the CMX zoning district not being a recommended typology, um, we do find an overall finding of consistency. So town council did conduct a public hearing on June eighteenth. Some of the um comments and concerns that were raised during that public hearing um are reflected here on the screen. Um, the a request for another neighborhood meeting before the planning commission, and they have done that. Um, they have increased the open space that children can play on. Um, it was initially eight thousand square feet and was noted that that was just too small. Um, appreciation was given to the applicants for the time that they have spent with council and staff leading up to the public hearing and um really listening to what uh the feedback that they had been given. Um, there was serious concern about the um the absence of workforce of affordable housing. But as you've heard, they have added that as a condition. Um, and they would like um all information to be uh consistent with the numbers. And that was a reflection of the uh transportation um analysis, impact analysis. There were some varying um numbers. And so the applicant did submit that updated TIA. And those numbers that you heard this evening are the most recent numbers from their from their TIA. Um, and comments regarding the traffic congestion and the impact on five forty. So we I have provided a uh draft consistency statement um that reflects a an overall um recommendation um of 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 strong level of consistency um with the town's con uh plans, adopted land use plans. And this is the consistent and recommend approval is the uh what staffs um indicates as a result of the analysis of this rezoning request. And you also have a draft motion to recommend approval to town council. Um, and this evening, we will have deliberations in discussing um the merits of the request and the findings of consistency. Um, and a recommendation to approve or deny the case um for council. Council will take the matter up and they will evaluate its merits on reasonableness and uh render a decision of approval or denial. And I would be more than happy to answer any questions. This concludes my presentation. The applicant is here this evening as well and has prepared a presentation as well for you all.
Quick question. Can you go back to this slide?
Yes.
There's some writing in the area one that I'm not able to make out. Is that any anything pertinent that we need to know what it says?
The air this kind of.
You can't make it out either?
The box. Yeah, I can't see it from here. I can look up my um. Oh, okay. It's parcel information, just basic parcel data is what the applicant is saying. Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Joseph, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On page ten, talks about the uh meeting that was held on July twenty-third and has XX persons in attendance. And it says, see attached neighborhood meeting report attached for further detail. I don't see that report.
That it wasn't included. Okay, I'm sorry. It we should have had that included. The applicant did provide that to us. Um, and we can, you know, I can even send it out right now because we do have it. That may have been an omission on our part.
That may have been. Portal. Um, while we look that up, are there are there any more questions for staff?
The neighborhood meeting packet that's in the portal, looks like we've had a couple of things um that didn't transfer current versions um for whatever reason. Uh, the one that is in your portal has the first two meetings, just not the third. Um, and then the staff report where you're seeing the yellow X's, that also had been updated, but for some reason transferred to the previous version. Uh, but Erin had that data in in the PowerPoint for you.
You send that over. The um this.
Okay, so anything else at the moment, or would you like to hear from the applicant? Okay, alright. Advocate can come forward and please state your name and your address and affiliation for our record.
Sure. Uh, good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I'm Collier Marsh with Parker Poe at three oh one Fayetteville Street. Uh, here on behalf of the applicant, also have two representatives of the applicant itself. I have Greg Richardson and Jim Skafsma, uh who are the, uh I guess, the S in the R in CRS one, the applicant for this project, as well as representatives um our engineering team from VHB. So they are all here to answer your questions. So this is the Benson Road Mixed Use Project. Uh, it's an interesting site. Um, it's about forty-seven total acres. I think just to set the stage for why this case is unique and why it feels a little different and looks a little different than what you're used to seeing, uh is that this is an area that is pretty far beyond the town's current limits. Uh, but it's an area that the town identified through its comprehensive planning process as uh ripe for growth and a lot of expected change. Uh, a lot in part because we have that five forty interchange. You can see the right of way from this older picture uh south of the site. Um, there's a lot of development potential near these five forty interchanges. And town did a great job of planning ahead, coming up for a vision for areas like this. Uh, and so we've looked to the town's new comprehensive plan for guidance. Now, what also makes it a little interesting is that we're more than a mile from water and sewer. Um, and so this project to come to fruition has to work to extend water and sewer to the site. Uh, there's a partnership that I can explain a little more about. But what that all means is that the market for this mixed-use development that's consistent with the town's comprehensive plan is years out. Uh, and so this is a project where, for reasons I will explain, it takes a little bit of a kind of a a balance to get necessary approvals to be able to work to get water and sewer down here. And so that's partly why you're seeing a tier-one rezoning. And again, I'll cover that in quite a bit of detail, but a lot of potential here. Uh, we're asking to be annexed into the town. This is current Wake County zoning. I think that's important to keep in mind that the buyright option is some low-scale uh well-inseptic uh residential on the rear of the site. Uh, and then the highway district, non-residential uses, you can have gas stations, things like that. Not really the best use of a site that the town envisions to be a mixed-use center. And so this rezoning and all the conditions that go with it offer the opportunity for something much greater and also much greater as part of the town of Garner and not part of Wake County itself. Um, so looking to the updated comprehensive plan, this is designated as a mixed-use center. Uh, and as the name suggests, we're calling for a mixture of uses here. Uh, I do want to pause just briefly on the comprehensive plan analysis. We have two inconsistencies there, one of which being that the CMX district is not one of the contemplated districts for a mixed-use center. Um, I think that staffs recognize that that probably should be what we would work for, what else we would be using for a project like this. And seems pretty spot on. So I think that's uh maybe an inadvertent, something that'll be changed in the future. Um, the other inconsistency with transportation really was the surrounding area and and nothing we could do about it. We've done everything we can on our site, and I'll talk about that. Um, in addition to being envisioned as a mixed-use center, this is also a level four A area to transform that calls for major transportation uh transformation quite a bit different than what you see in some of the surrounding areas. Uh, but there is adjacent commercial development in the area uh that this would help to establish and grow. Uh, calls for heights up to five stories. So again, in a formally, I guess, Wake County area with a five forty interchange, it's gonna look quite a bit different if the town's plans, uh comprehensive plan is fulfilled here. Um, so we are seeking that CMX district and just again, a tier-one zoning, so we don't have a master plan. We don't know exactly what can go here. Um, we have our ideas, but we don't have a definite plan in large part because without water and sewer, uh it's really hard to get buy-in from any type of investment and any type of, you know, legitimate, fully-vetted-out master plan until that's available. Now, to get water and sewer extended to this area, this development team needs something in hand to be able to get that investment. Say, we've got a project that can get built, it has a lot of upside. Now we need investment to extend those utilities. To get utilities out here, um you all may have heard some of the discussions. There's actually a group of developers. There's a handful of projects in and around the surrounding area that are of substantial size. And those groups are working for a private partnership to collectively put money together and extend the utilities down. So uh many seven figures to get it done, but you've got a a group that's gonna be able to bring this down, utilities down to this five forty interchange and essentially unlock the development potential uh for the town of Garner so that it can grow in in the way that it's envisioned here. Um, now, the five forty interchange when we started, well, very uncertain what that would be like. But now we've heard that it's uh it may be opening up in as early as two weeks. Um, so we'll start to see how that shapes the area, but how that ultimately affects growth opportunities here have still yet to be seen. Um, so ultimately, we're asking for a little bit of flexibility by submitting a tier-one rezoning uh to allow us to work to get utilities down here and come in with a more definite plan. Through the town's special use permit process, it gives the town essentially a separate public hearing process down the road with a more fi- final plan where you can see the full vision that still gets that full town council review. So there are checks in place. Um, but we recognize that it's a little different, especially for especially for a mixed-use center. So what we tried to do in this rezoning is put together a set of conditions that when you read through those, you don't need to see a plan because you know that every possible scenario has been addressed with really detailed conditions, environmental conditions, architectural commitments, site layout. And so we'll talk about those uh in more detail as well. This was just the exhibit meant to illustrate the developable area here. As you can see, there's a large area of wetlands in the center of the site and a power line easement running through it uh that really kind of divide your developable area. Now, a clear commitment of this project is that those wetlands will be preserved among other portions of the property that will maintain a more natural feel. Um, so we have three distinct developable areas, uh that area one being the most prominent, closer to the center of that mixed-use center and where we think the highest likelihood of the most intense development will go. Area three would be similar, but a little smaller in space. Um, area two on the rear side, uh on the Jordan roadside, um it also abuts a single-family residential neighborhood. So that is actually use-restricted to residential only and has some conditions to ensure compatibility. Uh, so just want to call out those different areas. Um, we also have a requirement to have cross-access between the site so that we can ensure a safe emergency services access and efficient access throughout the site. So, as I said, we worked extensively to come up with zoning conditions that give you assurances as the planning commission that no matter what goes here, it's gonna check all the right boxes. And we're pretty proud of that comprehensive plan uh analysis by staff, but we can't take all the credit. I I couldn't tell you how many meetings we had with staff to work through it, to talk about the comprehensive plan, to go through changes we can make to be more and more compatible. Uh, and so they've really collaborated with us to put together as be- as good a project as we were able to. Um, permitted uses, uh what you'd hope for and expect in a mixed-use center, all intended to be compatible with the residential area, but to create a a successful mixed-use center. Talk about the residential-only restriction, um a cap of six hundred and fifty residential units. Now, this was one of the comments and the discussion points at town council was some confusion over the cap on the um units. Now, the request since day one has been for six hundred and fifty maximum units. But what had happened is that our TIA was prepared before submittal and it had lower numbers. It had lower residential units and it had lower commercial entitlement. So we went through with a six hundred and fifty unit request and Erin, I think, actually called at the end, hey, your TIA doesn't reflect that because it was done earlier in the process. So we had to go in and update the TIA to more accurately account for that full residential entitlement and commercial entitlement, um which led to some confusion that there's a thought that maybe we had jumped the unit count at the last minute, which wasn't the case. Ultimately, the changes in the TIA had some positive benefits to uh give us a better shot at building some transportation improvements here that we think are important. Um, that's that next commitment. Um, so there's a signal warrant analysis requirement uh for the, I'll go back. So our main access point would be on Benson Road across from Southern Trace Trail. Uh, and so that's where that um condition relates to put a traffic signal there. And the updated TIA, um it's our engineer's opinion that that would warrant a traffic signal at full buildout. But we have the condition in there to protect against certain outcomes. So again, what if not all the units are built? What if something of lesser intensity, some other changes happen? We have a more definite plan down the road, the TIA is gonna have to be redone anyway. So we put a condition in there that said that at the point where we as a development team think that this project is most likely to trigger a traffic signal, then we will do a signal warrant analysis at that time. And if it warrants it, great, we'll build it. Um, so that threshold for us was when the commercial, we've got a minimum of twenty-five thousand square foot commercial, when we submit a site plan to build out that commercial minimum. We think that's the point in time when you're generating the most trips. We think that's one of the final phases, building out commercial, residential's been built. That's the point in time where if you haven't had a traffic signal yet, you're gonna go ahead and request one and do the the study and hopefully it turns up to have one. It's one of these instances we often find ourselves, um you know, dealing with public uh concern about a project. Well, what are we gonna do about traffic? You know, Benson Road obviously is has got some traffic issues. Um, our interests are aligned here. We, as the developer, want that traffic signal. And so we've tried to find the best way that we can ensure it gets developed here. Another consideration we filed with the tier-one is how can we set it apart? So what we can, what what can we do to differentiate this project to get council and planning commission excited about a project that you can't visualize yet? So what we did was we prioritized open space and environmental commitments at the outset. This is bringing something unique, uh something sustainable and something that sets a new precedent for development in the area. So we've got extensive open space commitments with forty percent of the site being open space. Twenty percent of the site would be tree preservation. And we've got an enhanced uh buffer on the southwest corner where adjacent to single-family residential neighbors. Uh, but within that wider buffer, we actually put a five-foot berm. The thought there being that the code does account for adequate screening, planting. But if you put a berm and you elevate it, it can only help that much more if you have anything of any height on our side of the property. Neighbors seem to be pretty thankful for that commitment. And again, that was the HOA that we met with separately to talk through their concerns. Um, otherwise, we we did up that um playfield commitment to twenty thousand square feet, so about a half an acre. Um, and that area two closest to our neighbors, we would have a playground unless it's developed for a fifty-five-plus community, which I think is something that those neighbors would hope to have, and I think there's some market interest for it. Um, and then we've got a seven thousand square foot program gathering area. This starts to get into the mixed-use component. How do we create a successful mixed-use area? And that's creating public spaces. And so that's required to have landscaping, benches, public art, things like that, so that it's truly, you know, a vibrant outdoor realm. Site design, so again, if you're submitting a list of conditions, how can we give you the planning commission assurances that this lays out as you would want in mixed-use development to lay out? So that we're not just building maybe a a strip shopping center and a couple of buildings behind it. And so what we did was we tried to explain through written condition how the non-residential and how the buildings would interact with Benson Road. And so our requirements are are there are a number of them, but essentially for our non-residential buildings, and you've got a minimum twenty-five thousand square feet, they have to, they cannot have residential buildings between them and Benson Road. That's our way of saying they front Benson Road, they're brought up where you want them. Um, we then restrict parking along Benson Road so that you create that more urban, more now main street feel with buildings up on the road. So what those restrictions are is that for non-residential, you can only have one bay of parking between the building and the street. You don't have, you know, like you think of a grocery store with a large parking lot and the commercial at the back. We're br- bringing our buildings up to the street. For residential, you can't have any parking between those buildings in the street. All the parking's in the rear, again, framing Benson Roads that creates attractive environment. And then only fifty percent of the Benson Road frontage could have any parking at all between buildings in the street. So again, we're coming up with creative ways to frame Benson Road to create that attractive environment that I think the comprehensive plan calls for. plan calls for. As I mentioned, we started with strong environmental commitments. We kind of came through a list of what are all the things we could do to set a bar for environmental development, and they cover all facets of development, from planning requirements, 75% native species, we've got signs, so we've got our large wetland area. We're putting out signs on those wetland areas so people know it's a sensitive area, you know, don't do dumb things there. Double silt fencing during construction assures that those wetlands areas are even more adequately protected during construction. I think after last week, we could recognize the importance of taking those extra steps to prevent runoff during construction. Green building standards for all primary buildings, I think that's a major commitment to we're ensuring sustainable development of our buildings. And then green infrastructure, two types have to be incorporated in the project. Again, this sets an extremely high bar for sustainable development in the town. We then broke down more specific commitments for the multifamily component, for the non-residential component. For the multifamily component, what we keep hearing from the town is we need to elevate the bar. We want to make sure that we have the highest possible quality, you know, no more of what we're used to seeing. There have been projects in the past that have been disappointing. What can we do to elevate everything? And so we took all the pieces that we've learned through other projects and included them here. So we have interior corridor and elevator-served units. That's essentially pushing these to the top of the market. That's the quickest way to do it. We have amenity commitments, and those amenities grow based on the number of units that we have. The height one's an interesting one. So when the goal is to have kind of the higher-end, best multifamily that you can have, some of the feedback we've heard from the town, one of the ways you do it is taller development. Taller development is more substantial investment, higher cost stuff, higher rents. So that's one way you do it. So that's why we put a minimum on height. It's going to be at least three stories. We know that when we go below three stories, you tend to see different products and see, and oftentimes inferior options. And so if we can push height up, it gives us something that will be better. But then we're surrounded by single-family neighborhoods in the general vicinity, and we don't want seven, 12 stories around them. We still need to be context-sensitive. And so that's why we put that five-story cap there. So we know we're between three and five. We're trying to balance the differing opinions on what the appropriate height is. And then architectural guidelines, they're extensive. We're happy to answer any questions on them, but the, basically what we've done is we've taken the lessons learned from past projects and gone through all the architectural commitments that have, have been approved and essentially added them all. Non-residential, similar story. We added extensive architectural commitments. This is the list of what's important. We're going to include it with this project. But then we had those commitments. We talked about how they orient with the street. We've got mandatory outdoor spaces with each of these buildings. Again, we're not just building strip malls, we're not just building a little, a little commercial building moving on, we're building an outdoor space with each of these to create that mixed-use environment. These are all the ways that we can ensure you have a good cohesive development. And then the last addition to the project is the workforce housing commitment. And this is something that came up at council, and we know that it's an important discussion in the town. And so we've added a commitment for 5% of units, 100% AMI being that, that number. How we came to that number, it's, there are a number of ways that you can approach affordable housing. I think the town's still working on what a clear plan is. We also know that for the highest end of mixed-use developments, your rents are well above AMI, well above. And so for this project, we were trying to come up with a commitment to show that we're doing our part, but we didn't want to inadvertently disincentivize getting that top-notch mixed-use environment. So when you start talking about vertical integration of uses, structured parking if the market supports, and all of those things drive rents up. And all of those things are things that would be supported for a top-end mixed-use development. And so we were trying to ensure that we didn't inadvertently put that number too low and discourage that type of investment here. And so that's how we came upon the number here, 5% of 100% AMI. Felt like a good fit to still advance the town's goals while simultaneously advancing the goal of having a top-notch mixed-use center. Transportation and traffic is always an important discussion. So for our project's requirements, we've got our traffic engineer who's far more competent and capable to talk about it than I am. But with our project, we are providing our widening on Benson Road to meet the ultimate four-lane buildout, hopefully having a traffic signal, and then doing our frontage improvements along. Jordan Road also would be a multi-use path on Benson Road as well. All of that is doing our part to ensure that Benson Road is ultimately built out to the four-lane section that it's envisioned to become. Now, one of the most important pieces of that is the section we have here. It's from Ran Road in the vicinity of the VA Hospital. And why this segment is so important, it's a funded DOT project, is because it includes the crossing over Swift Creek and the bridge that goes with it. So that's the piece that's hardest to get through. And by having this DOT project in the, in the works, it starts to create the precedent and kind of the hardest part is now over to create that full buildout of Benson Road, and then we are doing our part down along our frontage. And this just shows the full buildout, again, four-lane divided with a 10-foot shared path, and that 10-foot shared path would be developed with our project on our side of the road. Another project in the immediate vicinity of this site is the 10-10 Benson Road intersection funded by the DOT. And so I think if this project wasn't in the works, our TIA would have said that this would have been one of the things we would have done offsite or something towards the goal of improving this intersection. Fortunately, this project's already in the works. So the closest signalized intersection to the north of our site, already scheduled to be improved by DOT. And not to be lost in all this is that we're a stone's throw from the new 540 interchange. Again, if you're looking at an area where there are concerns about traffic congestion, if you could come up with the best possible thing you could do to alleviate congestion on that road, I'd say put a belt line near the site that takes you to any part of Wake County. And so we happen to be a location where we appreciate that's coming. And so we're trying to take advantage of locating development in a mixed-use center in the right location. And this just pans out a little bit, and you can see our site with the yellow star to the north, just showing that close proximity and, and really the area of expected great transformation here in the near future. So ultimately, we appreciate working with staff on this project and appreciate the consistency report and the effort that's gone into that. And so we respectfully request that you vote to recommend approval, and we've got a full team here to answer your questions.
Okay, thank you so much. So let's just have a chat. Do we have any questions for our applicant while he is with us? Looks like we do. Yep, so I will. Mr. Boylan.
Okay. In your presentation, you're using the figure 46.95 acres. In our paperwork, it says 49.51 acres. You lost two and a half acres. What happened?
Looking to the team.
Our measurement is according to the mall's survey.
Yeah, so I would, I would default to ours. Perhaps it was an error in translation, but ours comes from the survey acreage.
Okay. On the 40% open space figure, most, you'll agree, most of that is dictated by wetlands and an easement of power lines, correct?
Yeah, it's a large part of the site, yeah.
I've given Benson Road many, many times, so I'm embarrassed to ask this question, but is that just an easement or are there power lines there?
I believe there are power lines, yeah.
Okay. That's it for the minute.
Mr. Carson.
I appreciate the difficulty in trying to develop this site with the wetlands that run through there. I wanted to commend you on putting forth the signal analysis, if that is warranted, and to increasing the playfield up to 20,000 square feet per the request of neighbors. I do have, one, well, I've got two concerns. There seems to be a discrepancy on one of your last slides that you had said that it is affordable at or below 100% AMI. But your document says that you are going to have affordable housing units based on 100% of AMI, which leads us to believe that's kind of the minimum floor. I sit on the Garner Affordable Housing Task Force, and I, one of the things we've been talking about is a lot of these guidelines are set quite high. So for police officers and teachers in Garner, they're at about 50% of AMI. And I think you are probably much too high to actually have an impact on putting forth affordable housing units. So I would ask you, as you develop your program and your plans, to look at bringing that AMI percentage down. We've been, just in the early stages, but again, if, if police officers or teachers at 50%, having it at 100% means they can't live there. So some of our, our public servants and first responders and teachers wouldn't be able to afford to live here. So I would ask that you look at having that 5%. Maybe it's graduated, maybe a certain percentage at, I'm just throwing numbers at, 60%, certain percentage at 80%. If you will look at that. And one of the other questions I had, you were talking about building up the turn lanes along Benson Road, and that's going to be in conjunction with the four-lane buildout. So is your proposal going to be adding those turn lanes outside of that post-four lane? Or are you thinking you're going to put a, a turn lane that'll eventually be part of that four lane?
It would be in addition to, so we'd do our share of the four-lane buildout plus the turn lanes. And just real quick, in the affordable housing component, we wrestled with that. We recognized that, that there are a number of ways to cut it. And so we're certainly willing to continue discussions and make sure we do it right here.
That's all the questions. Oh, no, that's all the questions I had for now. Thank you.
Ms. Phillips? Ms. Fisher?
Yeah, so I know you mentioned the wetlands, and then you mentioned during the construction phase that there would be silt fences. I guess, what about after? I guess, how will the wetlands be protected even after, as people are residing there?
Sure. So, I mean, the silt fencing is meant to protect against stormwater runoff during construction and all the erosion that can take place during that point in time. By completion of construction, the site's designed to drain stormwater to appropriate locations to avoid that from happening in the first place. So you'll grade to prevent that situation. Ultimately, we want the wetlands and that open space to kind of interact with the site. And so we'll design our stormwater to divert the water, but then the protection for the wetlands post-construction is really just signage and notifying people to keep out. So I think that's probably the typical practice, is not to screen it off or block it off, but just to ensure it's preserved.
And then I see here the cross-access. Is that cross-access a, a bridge or a road, like between the wetlands to get to each?
Yeah, so it's, I mean, it'll take environmental permitting to get there, but it was an important comment for staff. I believe the transportation plan actually calls for access across from Benson to Jordan Road, so we needed to put something. So it will be for vehicular and bicycle and pedestrian crossings. Now, is that a bridge or something else? I don't know. I think that's probably subsequent engineering design to determine exactly what it takes. But that would be a fully, you know, Army Corps permitted crossing.
And then one other question, I guess, as far as the, the type of, like, stores or anything like that, is it like a grocery store? Do you guys have in mind, or just more of like your mom and pop kind of?
Yeah, so it's meant to be more neighborhood-serving. There's, there's a wide range of options. There is options for medical office and restaurants. So, you know, there's, there's a situation where at this interchange, there's a high demand for medical office, and you might be able to get a multi-story development, which I think would be welcomed here. You'd still have the residential components to go with it. But ultimately, I think the way we see the site developing, especially with this open space and those public realm commitments, is that you're looking more at shops, restaurants, and things like that that serve the mixed-use component in the surrounding area. And there's a highway interchange there, so there will be, you know, a decent amount of vehicular traffic that could come straight to stores and things there.
Thank you.
Ms. Ava?
I just have one quick question. The square in the bottom southeast corner of Area Three, I'm assuming that's that property that's there. Is that going to remain or is that going to be incorporated into your design?
It's going to be incorporated into the site. Those, those owners actually approached us. We didn't have that originally. It was filed without it, and they said, "Hey, we'd love, we'd love to sell you this, this home to be part of it," so.
When you say to be, be part of it, it, it's being demolished or?
Correct. Yeah, the home is not going to remain, but they are, they love to sell their land to be part of the project.
I, I do have some questions about the connectivity across the wetlands, and I know you don't know exactly how that's going to work, but we really only have two major access points to the development, one from Benson Road and one from Jordan Road. And we haven't really, haven't really heard a lot. I've heard a lot about what's going to happen on Benson Road, like the improvements and such, but what's happening on Jordan Road?
Sure.
Those are all small, single-family houses. And if we really only have two main entrances to this development, including some type of commercial component to that on the northeast, then what happens on Jordan Road and the traffic?
Yeah, so, and, and this exhibit's probably a little misleading, that there's, we're probably not going to be restricted to those two access points, but those are envisioned as the main ones. So I think in all likelihood, in the bottom right corner where that home, that little parcel is, there's a street across it, you have an opportunity for an access point there, as well as one potentially on the north side. So we could have up to three access points on Benson Road and more, up to two on Jordan Road. So it, ultimately, those would be developed at site plan, more information. So this isn't meant to limit access to two. It's just meant to show the two required to ensure adequate transportation improvements. Some of those are likely to be right in, right out, you know, as it plays out. We're not, not certain what they are, but we do think that there will be more access points. But to your question, what does this mean for Jordan Road? So Jordan Road obviously is a different character than Benson Road, and we're cognizant of that. The discussions with Jordan Road, one focused on our neighbors to the south and how do we buffer them from development. And so that's where that added buffer came in with the berm, so that if you do have something of height, that it has kind of a height element to the screening. Residential only, again, that was something that the neighbors asked for, so don't put commercial on the back end. It makes sense, only residential uses there. But that's where that signal became so important to everybody in all directions, because you, we wanted to provide the best possible, most efficient way to get out to Benson Road. What you want to avoid is folks going out on Jordan, going up to 10-10, making a right and going to the light there. And so our best way that we are able to address that is to work to get that signal on Benson Road to draw the bulk of the traffic to that intersection. So that was kind of a common goal among everybody. But, you know, we, we appreciate that it is a little different than the rest of the area. I think it, in all likelihood, likely to develop at a much lower intensity. The site itself, the way it lays out, isn't, isn't friendly for, you know, an efficient layout. So, you know, we're constrained by the site. We want to unlock some potential, and it would be residential there. We think that the access that we're providing is the best that we're able to.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's really important to acknowledge that. And I think that, and I don't know, I don't know if the traffic study shows potential access points for turns on Jordan Road. I don't think so, or maybe, maybe so. I think that we, I think it would be really important to make sure that in your communication of your access points, though we know that we're showing that two that are required, but that this, these are not the only access points being planned.
Yeah, it's a good.
Because the, the community's going to see this and think that, you know, how in the world are you going to get 650 units with, you know, cars and a commercial component in and out of one, one entrance on Benson Road? And then what happens on the other side when they try to follow through to get to the other side of Jordan Road? It's only a two-lane road there.
For what it's worth, we spent several hours with the community on that very topic. That was the most important point to Mr. Carson's question about that last neighborhood meeting. That was generally the discussion, is how does traffic flow work here? It turned out to be a pretty amicable group. Part of the need for that last meeting was that there's actually a group of neighbors far beyond the notice limits that hadn't heard about the project, and so they needed to kind of get up to speed on it. And they were the bulk of the attendees.
I think, I think you answered the connectivity part, but do you think that that cross-access is the only cross-access need?
It's going to be the only one that we'd be able to get permitted.
Think it'll work well?
Well, I think that as you see constraints, the market will see constraints as well. And so if you're going to develop that rear section that doesn't have Benson Road frontage, what are you going to put there that doesn't have that visibility? It's likely to be something of lower intensity. So I think the market will recognize the same constraints that you do.
You also mentioned that, and I may have gotten this wrong in the development, in the construction, you know, I'm assuming that the single-family... the construction, you know, I'm assuming that the single family will be first? Or will the mix, the, the, the mixed-use component be first? But you also kind of shared that the commercial will come later.
Yeah, so there's, there's no phasing commitment. The commitment was, one, residential only in the rear. More about the way we envision it, the site laying out is that the demand for residential we think will be there first. And so the residential component will probably fuel the initial development of the site and will leave area for that commercial development that we could be fortunate and the market could tell us it's all vertically integrated. So it's all speculative. But ultimately, what I was getting to was that in kind of the scenarios I've seen over and over again, that commercial component tends to follow the residential. And so when we tie our signal warrant analysis to the build out of commercial, it's likely to be at a later stage in the process where we're most likely to trigger it. So that, that was what I was trying to get at. There's no set, this has to come first, but there are requirements that things have to lay out in a certain way. So we're going to have to reserve spaces. If it is a residential-only component, we're going to be required to reserve that space to ensure the commercial comes. If that answers your question.
So you don't know?
We're, we're looking in the future. We don't know.
So you have no idea if that commercial is going to be integrated into the building component for the residential at all, so it's really truly mixed use?
We don't know. Yeah, we, we, we hope, I think that that's the best possible use of the site and I think that that's what we've tried to facilitate with commitments. But again, the, the market here with no utilities, there's been great discussions with, you know, potential partners, but until there's a concrete plan to extend water and sewer here, no one's investing any meaningful amount into, you know, developing the site.
And when you list green building standards for the primary buildings, are, are you only talking about the commercial mixed-use component or the commercial component and/or not the residential?
It was, my recollection is it tended to be all primary buildings, but what we're trying to exclude is things like dumpster, like trash facilities or other ancillary buildings that don't necessarily need to be built to a green standard or like isn't a good green standard for them to match.
So would the single family be considered primary?
Uh, we, so townhomes would be the only potential single family here, so they would be considered primary. I'll note that in the CMX district too, townhomes are rearload only. So they're, they're just, they'd be an interesting layout on the site if that's what the, the market bore.
Okay, I would definitely make sure that when you kind of try to incorporate green building technology, that it's something that you, that's being utilized throughout the entire site.
It, it requires this too.
Okay, I think those are probably all my questions for the moment, I think. Mr. Carson has asked the affordable housing question that I would have asked as well. So thank you for that. I think that's really important.
I have a quick one. Educate me, what's a lift station?
Uh, for sewer. So to, so to get sewer pumped out over High Point, we'd need a lift station there. And again, on the affordable housing discussion, this was meant to essentially initiate the discussion and make sure we get it right, so.
And in your list of green stormwater options, you're not precluding a possible use in, when you finalize your plans and having stormwater control above or below, correct?
Correct.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Yeah, so I guess regarding that lift station, would it like emit any type of like pungent smells that would impact the resident?
It's pretty standard. They're all throughout, you know, all throughout Garner and you wouldn't have it.
And then also as far as the like pool area and everything, where would that be? I guess like based on this map?
Yeah, I mean, again, ultimate plan layouts aren't certain, but I think the envisioned most intense layout or development is in Area One, so you'd probably have a centrally located courtyard type amenity.
That does bring up my other question that I had that I forgot about, which is the open area, the play area. And I think the reason I asked that question about connectivity in one or more ways is where would that be located and how would that be accessible from all three sections of the site?
Yeah, I mean, the one play area would only be accessible on either side through the cross access, so it's, we're, we're not putting twenty thousand on either side. I, I think in all likelihood, you look into an Area One. I think that's where that kind of central gathering space will go. It's possible that Area Three incorporates something like that, but in all likelihood, I would expect it to be incorporated in Area One.
Okay, there are no other questions for the applicant. I want to make sure that we have an opportunity for the public to give feedback if we have any support for or against the development that would like to speak for. This is a time to speak for. Yes. This is a, a speech in, in, in favor? Or is this in against?
Against.
Okay, are there any, is there anyone in favor of the development that would like to speak? All right, so anyone against that would like to give us your feedback? Yes, you can come forward to the mic and state your name and your address. And we want to limit our comments to about ten minutes so that we can.
About how long?
Ten minutes would be great.
Ten minutes?
That was for the, this is for the whole session.
I don't think I can do ten minutes.
You can do much less.
Much less. And, and I appreciate keeping that up there too. My name is John Cavallaro. I live at fourteen forty Turner Farms Road in, in Garner, which is the adjacent development next to Southern Trace. It's on the southern side of that. It's probably, you probably see it right on the, the little road there, the map. And I've lived there for twenty-nine plus years and I guess that's enough for that. I mean, unless you have any questions regarding where I live. Obviously, I've seen the development of Benson Road grow tremendously in the last twenty-nine years. And I have some statements regarding what they've presented last time as well as this time, and it focuses around the apartments. That is an area that probably for a minimum of three miles radius is residential. Middle, middle-class homes, R thirty, it's been that way since I've been there. We have a res, a commercial down on forty-two and Benson Road. We have commercial up on Timber and Benson Road. We have commercial on, some commercial on Old Stage Road and, and ten-ten. And we have commercial on White, in White Oak. So within that location, within five to ten minutes, I can get to any commercial place to get anything I need, whether it's food shopping, whether it's home development, home replacement stuff, anything of that nature. Across the street from my development, there is a, a small stores for, for daily things. There is a Dollar General of that nature. So during rush hour, as been stated, Benson Road is at capacity. Peak hours in the morning, peak hours in the afternoon, peak hours in the morning start around six, six-thirty and around eight-thirty, nine. Tap is off. In the evening, it used to be where rush hour started around three-thirty, but now I notice it's two-thirty to three o'clock. Expansion, obviously. Years ago, when I first got there, the biggest development was south of forty-two. A lot of homes came in, traffic increased. The next biggest development was on Cleveland School Road, right off of there. There is another, which amazed me that there's probably two hundred homes, I'll say off the top of my, in this little tiny area. So now the intersection of Cleveland Road and Benson is intense and which, and then add the traffic from south of forty-two and it gets very busy. It used to be when, when our, when Interstate Forty had only set a couple of lanes, something happened there. It became a total black, backup on fifty. Today, we have between six and nine AM and three and seven PM, I'll say, we have rush hour. So if I take the numbers that was presented of five thousand five hundred and twenty-four new one-way average daily trips, so that's a single vehicle times five thousand five hundred and twenty-four single-vehicle one-way trips per day. Did some back-of-the-napkin calculation, that comes to two hundred and thirty per hour. If I take that, and that's twenty-four hours, but if I just take that two-thirty and multiply it by the three hours in the morning and the four, add the four hours in the afternoon, I get one thousand six hundred and ten single trips occurring during rush hour on top of the already capacity Benson Road. My feeling is that, well, that's the first part. So my feeling that is you're going to add sixteen hundred cars, I'll say vehicles, on the road during rush hour that is already at capacity, it is going to lock up that road. I saw a quick map of expansion plans, which I will look up when I go home and see what that, that DOT plans are. I also look at the map and I see that, that a majority of that is wetlands. There are three areas being developed. One is Area Two, which is residential, which I think I just heard is going to be townhouses, if I heard that correctly. That's going to be a majority. So that's going to be townhouses of, I don't know how, I guess it's part of the six hundred and fifty, I'll guess at this point. Then Area One will probably be the majority of the apartments with some in Area Three. Area One and Area Three have to empty out on Benson Road. No way out of it. If there's, even if there's a cross access of the little road, no one's going to take that unless they absolutely have to. So they'll go out on Benson Road. So you'll have six hundred, let's say a thousand, let's say a thousand out of that, a thousand of those daily added to Benson Road during rush hour. It will lock the place up. And if I try to come out of my development and make a right turn to get on there, I could probably expect instead of me taking twenty minutes now to get to the Timber Road fifty location, instead of me, it may take me anywhere up to forty-five minutes to get there. That's, I may be exaggerating it, but it's definitely better than twenty minutes. Adding a light helps with traffic flow because you're going to get these people out, they're trying to get out, but adding a light slows down the traffic. That's the plus and minus of a light, a traffic light. If I had to, if I was, if you were to ask me, should we do this and should we not? I would say no, number one. Number two, I'd say if you wanted to do this, I would wait until Benson Road and ten-ten are expanded. And then when the infrastructure is expanded, which was my comment when, here, when I came to the meeting back last time, you expand the infrastructure first and then you can handle the traffic. So that was six minutes, is that okay? I set my timer on purpose because I didn't want to overdo it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for sharing that information with us. Is there anyone that is, that has signed up to speak?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd just like to reference an email that got sent out on Friday and it only went to Mr. Trezenberg, Mr., well, a few of the staff members, I guess, and three of the planning commission members. And it's in opposition to the development and it's from a Tammy Jermiller, five-three-three-three Woodbeck Drive in Garner. She's a thirty-four-year career transportation professional and she is against this development, but there's, I'm not going to read the whole, all the details here, but there's two things I'd like to point out and perhaps the transportation engineer or Mr. Marsh or somebody could comment. She states a rural two-lane highway is at capacity when the AADT reaches approximately eighteen thousand cars per day and per the applicant's proposal, they're already at nineteen thousand four ninety-nine. That's before you're adding in five thousand plus trips a day. And I understand that you're here for just a rezoning and you're trying to get the utilities brought to the site, which have to happen before you can even build the site. So I, I get the, the sequence of events. My question is, if you're, if DOT already says that eighteen thousand is at capacity and you're already at nineteen, but you're going to add this other five, how do you see this sequencing as far as getting investors to bring the utilities, which is a long process? And then bringing your plans, getting approval, which is a process? Will Highway Fifty, and this might be a question from Mr. Trezenberg, but do we know what the timeline is for Benson Road to be widened in that area? So if, if it's two years, this will probably all be widened before we get to start building. If it's five, six, eight years, perhaps not. So I'm trying to follow up with the gentleman's suggestion that, you know, Benson Road should be widened first. What is that timeline and how does that mesh with all the work that the developers have to do in pulling people together to get utilities brought to this area?
I can start. The fifty is not getting widened without this developer. This project here, this DOT project is a small segment that's expected to be expanded to four lanes. Beyond that, the town, Wake County is going to rely on developments that come in and do the widening along their frontage. So there aren't plans for widening along our area without this development. I, I think, you know, what, what we've seen over time is that stopping development doesn't stop the cars from coming. The people that are going to live here may just live further out and sprawl and drive more and drive longer distances. But a project like this can come in and bring meaningful traffic improvements. It's a tough situation to be in. We appreciate that Benson Road is at capacity, but it's going to take multiple projects like this to complete the widening on that frontage and foreseeable future without those projects that's not getting done. Now, we, I can have our traffic engineer get into some of the finer details, but, but it needs the private partnership to complete the project.
Well, for the rezoning application, I, I don't think that's necessary. I'm just, I mean, you mentioned a DOT project, so there's no DOT project to widen this. It's going to be done in piecemeal as development happens?
So what, so what you're saying is the projects that the applicant has highlighted, those are projects that came about from bone, what they call bonus allocation funds that were, that were set aside by DOT as part of the five-forty project. These pro, the monies that came with that had to be spent within a couple miles of the corridor. So Garner has benefited from that considerably and will be getting a second round of those with the other phase of five-forty as it gets going between Garner and Knightdale. So that's how this bridge and the widening at Lake Benson is occurring as well as the improvements there at ten-ten and Benson. Of course, what we don't know yet, but by the end of this month, five-forty will open at least going back west and then east to forty. What those numbers are going to look like and how much that might impact numbers in the area. So yeah, fifty widening is on the regional transportation plan. It's in, I believe, the second group of Horizon years, but there is no committed funding for that. At this point in time, if a section were to somehow get funded, it probably would not be down here. It would be the section from New Bethel Church up to Timber Drive. And we had a discussion with our colleagues at Campo just in the past week about the spot process, which is the every two-year ranking process that DOT goes through to allocate funds for projects. There's still several other projects that are scoring better than fifty widening. So we're kind of at a point where some of those other projects have to get built. Thankfully, some of them are getting started, but until they're finished, there's really not going to be any funding to allocate to other projects. So at least, you know, five to ten years probably before it would even qualify for funding.
I, I'm, I'm supportive of this rezoning application, but I want to read one more paragraph from Ms. Tammy Jermiller, who, like I said, is thirty-four-year transportation background. And this is just her comments. It says, "Under NC DOT's Highway Safety Improvement Program, two locations were identified as potentially hazardous intersections near the project site. One is at ten-ten at Jordan Road, which is being addressed currently, I think, with DOT plan. The other is NC fifty at Indian Creek. Adding a huge apartment complex will only make..." Adding a huge apartment complex will only make more intersections fail." So I just wanted to note her objections, and she's very detailed here. And I would ask that staff reference her email objection in the minutes, just so that it's recorded. That's all I have, but I would like to see when a plan is ever developed and it comes back to the Planning Commission, if it comes back before us, that I'd like to see the traffic impact analysis with our information. The detail that's on there, it's very blurry. Can't really make it out. And I know this is just rezoning, but I'd like to see a little bit more information when it's flushed out at that time. But for rezoning, I think we're good here, myself.
Yeah, I have one other question. Do you know, I guess, what the impact is regarding the schools? I see here that there's like a small school, Rand Road Elementary. Do you know what the potential impact would be?
No, we haven't gotten to that point in the process where we get it from Wake County.
Okay. We have questions, from the applicant to staff. We've had some comments, which we appreciate all of them. And so now, in order for us to make some decisions and discuss further, if there are more questions from staff, we need to decide on a direction. So is there a motion for this case for us to review?
I'll make the motion if we're ready. I move that the Planning Commission accept the consistency statement drafted herein as our own written recommendation regarding the consistency of the request with the town's adopted land use plans and recommend approval of KCZ-23-02 to Town Council.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor, and I will call the vote. Gina Avent.
Aye.
Mariah Bishop.
And this is voting for just the...
The draft motion to recommend approval and accept the consistency statement.
This is only for the rezoning?
For the rezoning.
Yes.
Aye.
Ralph Carson.
Aye.
Philip Jefferson.
Aye.
Sherry Phillips.
Aye.
Michael Boylan.
Aye.
That's six ayes. The motion passes.
Thank you all. Next on our case list is CZMP2304, Homestead at Bryan Farm. If we can get that up for us to review.
All right, good evening. I'll be presenting CZMP2304, Homestead at Bryan Farm. This is a Tier Two request, so it does contain a master plan of the site. The applicant is Lennar Corporation. They have submitted the request to rezone, Tier Two conditional rezoning, 99.17 acres from rural agriculture to residential eight, R8C306, for the collective maximum of 265 dwelling units. And note that this number is down from the, excuse me, the original application of 291. This request, it does also further explaining that maximum includes individual maximums of 107 townhouse units and 167 single-family detached units. And so just to make sure we're clear on that, the maximum that could ever be developed would be 265. And so 107 and 167 doesn't add up to 265, but it does give them some buffer room if they have less or more of the townhomes or the single-family detached. They just could not exceed 107 for the townhomes or exceed 167 for the single-family detached. So that's why you see those numbers represented in that manner. Right, and this site is located on the west side of Hebron Church Road and just north of Clifford Road. Currently, the site is on rural agriculture. That is intended for rural residential agriculture and civic culture. It's typically found in the outside, outside of the town's corporate limits, where public water and sewer services are not readily available. And currently, the site is predominantly vacant, but there is a single-family detached house as well on the site, this little corner here. A mix of R2, R4, C conditional, and CMX surrounds the site. So you have CMX and NMX here, and then you have R2, R4 conditional, R4 conditional, and R4 conditional. And you have some R2 that's in there as well. Water and sewer are available and will connect from the adjacent Ridgemore subdivision here. There is a neighborhood activity center to the northeast of the site. This area of the community consists of a mixture of vacant tracts, agricultural uses, and single-family neighborhoods. Since 2015, this area has been transitioning, transitioning from low-density rural agriculture to suburban developments and densities. Several projects have been improving this area over the last several years. Hebron Church Road and Clifford Road are NC DOT maintained roads, and they're classified as secondary routes. Hebron Church Road and Clifford Road also serve as primary connectors to larger state roads, including White Oak Road that's here, and then you have NC 50 that's just off the screen to this end of the map. The most recent NC DOT traffic count for Hebron Church Road was 6,681 average daily trips in September of 2023. And in the same year and month for Clifford Road, the average daily trips was 3,241. The applicant has narrowed the possible uses to two out of 18. Again, the collective maximum of dwelling units is 261. And again, the individual maximums of 107 townhouse units and individual maximum of 167 single-family detached units. They also have proffered other conditions outside of that narrow list of permitted uses. Again, the maximums of the dwelling units. A homeowners association will be established. The developer will share in the cost of the White Oak and Bryan Road corridor improvements identified in the Walters Buffalo Development Agreement that was approved in November 2022. And the developer's share of the improvement will be calculated and consistent with the terms of Section 6 of the Walters Buffalo Development Agreement. There shall be a pool with a minimum of 1,500 square feet, and the main amenity cabana shall be a minimum of 800 square feet. All slat foundations with an exposed height of greater than 12 inches shall be finished with masonry product and applies to the front and side elevations with right-of-way frontage. And also, the slat foundations with an exposed height of 12 inches or less shall be textured with paring and applies to the front and side elevations as well. They have committed to garage doors having windows and decorative hardware. There will be a minimum of two garage window styles and two garage hardware styles shall be included. And all homes shall have a minimum of 12-inch eaves on all sides. They have committed to 80 square feet of outdoor deck porch or patio, which is required on all dwelling units. If a porch is chosen, it may be an enlargement of the porch requirement by the preceding condition, and this condition does not require two porches. And so a minimum, speaking to that, a minimum of five feet by five feet covered front porch is required on all dwelling units. And all entries must include one of the following: side lights, transom windows, craftsmen-style paneling, and glazing in the door. Any non-decorative front porch columns and other pilasters shall be a minimum of six inches in dimensions, the width or the depth, and decorative columns with variable dimensions, maybe less than six inches in width or depth. Any cantilever projections shall have cosmetic brackets or shelf supports directly underneath them. All dwelling units shall have at least one window per habitable floor on each side elevation, excluding the interior townhomes. All windows of a dwelling unit, with the exception of access windows and bay windows, shall feature a common mud tin pattern. And all windows within a street-facing facade face utilizing side materials shall either be set in full trim, at least equivalent to one-by-four board, or feature decorative sills and pedestants. And all windows within elevations clad in brick or stone shall include masonry or decorative sills and lentils. And the following is required, but not limited to the main amenity area: a swimming pool, cabana, benches, trash receptacles, and bike racks. Decorative light fixture, a minimum of six inches wide and 12 inches long, shall also be included on all door, garage door facades. Black aluminum fencing will be provided around this wet pond storm water control measure. Vinyl siding shall be prohibited, but vinyl trim and decorative details are permitted. Construction of the main amenity shall commence prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy in Phase One, and construction of the main amenity shall be completed within 18 months. Each pocket park, except for Part B, shall contain a minimum of two of the following elements: benches, pet waste stations, shade structure, playground, dog park, or paved walking trails. All dwelling units shall have either a two-car garage or a one-car garage with a size of at least 12 by 20 feet. The attached dwelling units or townhouses and building with a pitch roof shall feature a break in the front-facing slope or roof peak, such as gable, dormer, chimney, capella, et cetera, and a minimum of two breaks for buildings of four units or less. A minimum of three breaks for buildings of five units or more. The existing farmhouse shall be exempt from all architectural conditions listed above. At least one dog park shall be provided in the development, and there shall be two play lawns. There will be a minimum of 10,000 square feet. And the play lawn shall be bounded loosely by landscaping and other hardscaping features, such as trees, shrubs, benches, decorative fence sections, sidewalks, trails, or similar. And at least one playground shall be provided in the development. So here you have the master plan and the layout of the site. In the purple, you do have the single-family detached. And then this is the area that you have the single-family, the attached to the townhomes. There are two different sizes for the townhomes. You have one that's 28 feet and one that's 22 feet. So the golden color is the 22 feet wide, and then the pinkish color is the slightly larger, 28 feet wide. You can see here the trails that are connecting from Hebron Church Road, the extended sidewalk, the public greenway, and the internal public trail that bisects the development. As well, is in purple, you have the private trails that attempt to connect the site. You also have the pocket parks. This is one of the pocket parks, your tree preservation area, and your storm water control measures are there as well. So the master plan, which is, again, 99.17 acres, it's illustrating on that master plan 158 single-family dwellings and 98 townhomes. Again, they do have some buffer room to maneuver when the site is actually laid out and goes to subdivision review. But again, keep in mind that 167 is the individual max for the single-family dwellings and 107 for the townhomes. So 9.92 acres of open space is required. 25% of that must be active. And there are some considerations of the combination of conservation and recreation space and recreation qualifying open areas, amenities, and pedestrian trails with connections to the new segment of the public greenway and the conservation areas, repairing buffer areas and wetlands. The site is not in a watershed protection area. However, it is subject to water quality and quantity requirements. There are three surface storm water control measures. And again, the site will connect to the new water main from the Ridgemore subdivision. And sewer lines will also be extended to adjacent and upstream properties per the Raleigh, City of Raleigh's water policy. So T, traffic impact analysis was completed in June of 2023, and it was also updated in July of this year to reflect the assumption of a maximum of 265 dwelling units. Again, as feedback was given to the applicants, they have reduced the number of units. And so they were like, wanted to update their traffic impact analysis to reflect that. So there's expected 2,313 trips on the average weekday. In the AM peak hours, you have a total of 41 estimated trips in and 123 trips out. In the peak, you have 130, peak PM, you have 133 trips in and 83 trips out. There were no off-site improvements recommended as needed, reflected the limited proportional impact of added traffic generated by this proposal. And this figure does show the 2027 future build-out configuration and the requirement for a new 50-foot dedicated northbound turn lane on Hebron Church Road and a new 50-foot dedicated westbound turn lane on Clifford Road. There has, have been some additional considerations for transportation in this area, considering the development that is happening within the immediate area. And so just notes to keep in mind regarding the transportation, that there is adequacy in the area for future road network. And as analyzed at a high level during previous comprehensive plan work, it was noted that this area does support medium-density residential of about 2.5 to 5 dwelling units per acre. About two point five to five dwelling units per acre. Um, staff tested the I T E trip estimates, and that was found to be consistent with locally available data. And the focus analysis on build out of dwelling units using other Hebron Church Road or New Bethel Church Roads. Um, Ackerman and Brian were not studied at this time. The capacity for over six thousand more trips beyond this project and those currently in the pipeline. Um, so build out south of Clifford and Guy Road should work so long as the densities do not exceed the current average. Um, the environmental and cultural resources, uh, there is an existing stream associated with buffers along the northern boundary. Of the project, um, the existing pond, which is, uh, on site is proposed to be drained. And a public greenway is proposed along the utility transmission, um, easement that bisects the site. And also a public greenway side path link between transmission easement corridor. And the Hebron Church Road corridor via Clifford Road. And the historic farmhouse on the corner of Clifford Road and Hebron Church Road is proposed to remain. So there were a hundred and twenty-six properties and occupants that were notified for the neighborhood meeting. They conducted their first neighborhood meeting in June of twenty twenty-three. And the second meeting was held in January of this year. There were nine attendees at the first meeting and eleven at the second meeting. You should have your, the, the, uh, full meeting information attached, um, with your staff report. Let me know if it isn't. Um, and the, considering the consistency with the Garner Forward Plan. Um, this site is not within an activity center. But however, again, there is a neighborhood, uh, just to the northeast neighborhood area, uh, character typology. The northeast of the site. This area is identified as a level two area to strengthen. And this is the neighborhood, um, character, uh, area character typology. In reviewing this case, there were seventeen growth framework criteria that were evaluated. Thirteen were strongly consistent and one was modestly consistent. Had one split, uh, no modestly inconsistencies and two strongly inconsistent. Uh, the strong inconsistencies were related to the front loaded townhomes. And the form of small lot, um, single family detached homes. The land use and community character, uh, review revealed that there were twenty-six criteria determined to be applicable. Or possible, uh, meaningful to address. Um, consistency, uh, is modest at this point. Um, the applicant has made changes, uh, to the master plan and their conditions to. Move that consistency to that, the modest level that we see today. Um, by enhancing the street frontages, um, the use of the open space for creating a stronger central focal point of, to the neighborhood. And proffering those additional conditions or even clarifying the existing ones. That helps to speak more directly to specific recommendations of the comprehensive plan. So certainly adding that playground, um, and enhancing those street frontages, uh, were able to move. The consistency in a positive direction. And we believe with some continued fine tuning in response to this evaluation tool. And additional public input, um, staff could likely support a stronger overall finding of consistency. There was a public hearing held on July sixteenth. Of some of the comments that were received during that, uh, hearing. Um, council expressed appreciation to the applicant for their diligence and willingness. To work and listen to the suggestions that, um, uh, to their proposal to make it even better. Uh, clarification regarding the existing house, and if it will be included in the HOA, it will. Um, requests to continue the con- conversation regarding the overall traffic situation within the surrounding area. Um, you do have some update, uh, information in the staff report. That speaks more directly to, um, looking at traffic concerns from a more, uh, comprehensive perspective. Um, continue to refine the conditions pertaining to the housing product with emphasis on quality. Um, there was a question regarding the R eight zoning district. And the, and the envisioned purpose of that di- of that district and the density. And its appropriateness in relation to the surrounding district's density. Um, there was a question of consistency due to the lack of a non-residential component. In a, uh, commercial desert area of town. And there was a concern that a solely residential development in a level two area to strengthen is not a strategic investment. Um, as described in the Garner Forward Plan. And there was discussion about commercial development in the area. And being intentional about including commercial rezonings when and where appropriate. We do have a draft consistency statement, um, that, uh. Please that, uh, there's a strong level of consistency with the plan's growth framework. And that this request to rezone these ninety-nine acres to residential eight. Is consistent with the town's adopted plans, land use plans. Provided a, uh, image of consistent and recommend approval, um, based upon staff's analysis. And we have a draft, um, uh, motion for you all this evening. Again, um, tonight we'd like to, uh, discuss the merits of, of this case in relation to consistency. And provide a recommendation to town council of denial or approval. Um, town council again will take the matter up and decide on the, uh, findings of reasonableness. And render a decision of approval or denial of this case. Again, I can answer questions, um, and the applicant has also provided, um, a presentation for you this evening.
Okay, thank you. Uh, are there any questions for staff now? Okay, Ms. Phillips.
Yeah, on, on page six of our meeting notes. Under stormwater notes, it says to satisfy these needs, the development plans to use a single stormwater control measure. Except the map we're shown and their proposal shows three. So is that just an oversight in what the staff wrote?
I think that came back from, um, from our engineering department from a preliminary look. Um, so the three as they're showing now is correct. We'll update that for council though going back.
Okay. That's my only question.
I just have another comment, same as last one. Uh, page nine, um, they talk about, uh, talking about the full neighborhood meeting, including list of questions and concerns is attached at the end of this report.
Mm-hmm. It wasn't in there?
We don't have that report either.
Okay, I'm, I'm truly sorry. I don't know what happened with, why the, uh, neighborhood, uh, meetings. I, I think it didn't get transferred over to you all as external. So we'll, I'll do a better job to ensure that that is in there, um, for you all.
They were in the portal online, but it's not printed.
Okay, so they're in the portal. You just didn't get a printed copy?
Just didn't get printed.
Okay.
They're online.
We'll make sure that it's both in the future.
Okay.
I have a quick question for you, Erin. Um, it's more of a clarification. On, um, page four, number ten. Under the condition, the first part of that condition says that there's going to be eighty square feet of deck porch or patio. And I'm assuming those are rear items on the rear of the house?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that correct? Okay, so then the second part of it says that, um. There may be an enlargement of the porch required by the preceding condition. If I go to number nine, which is the preceding, it talks about eaves. So I'm assuming, assuming you mean proceeding.
Right.
Number eleven.
The number eleven with the.
With the five by five.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I know that you mentioned that the total number of units was two hundred and sixty-five. And we've, and you know, and we see, we see a hundred and seven, then we see a hundred and sixty-seven for townhomes. Oh, wait a minute, a hundred and sixty-seven for.
For the single family.
But then a hundred and seven in townhomes. And then on the other page five, we see a hundred and fifty-eight single family and ninety-eight townhomes. And I understand that it's, you're still meaning that total number. But what I want to make sure is that we don't get to a percentage where we have more townhomes than single family. That's not going to happen, right?
Right, because they can only have a maximum ever of one hundred seven townhomes.
Got it. Got it.
Which is the determining factor, the statement in section two or the illustration that we're kind of looking at that has the lower numbers?
So the master plan is, um, illustrative and to give you an idea of the site. But the written conditions are what always prevail. And so that's why we ensure that what is written is what, what, what can actually happen. Versus the site plan, uh, the master plan gives you an idea of what it could be. But again, there's the, that, that room that's allowed for them to add or subtract units.
I think it's got, alright, okay.
You had mentioned that the planning department had concerns over the size of the single family lots. What, what's the square footage? What's the acreage of the single family? And what's, what's the general concern? They're just too narrow, too, too small overall?
Right, so the, for, um, the small lot, it recommends that it is a quarter, eight or less than a quarter acre. I believe these lots are, um, just below that, they're about five thousand square feet. Um, so they, they are small lots, but the house, the, the small form of the house, which typically you'll see a. Detached garage, a narrower house, um, that is not provided. So that's where that inconsistency, um, lies in, in the lot size versus the product type that is being placed on that lot. And what the comprehen- uh, comprehensive plan envisions as a small lot, small, um, narrower entrance. Uh, detached garage, but these garages are, um, attached. For the single family, um, detached homes.
So is there no opportunity for that to be slightly increased to kind of, to, to make that move to a more positive?
Well, we bring that to the attention of the applicant and, you know, they have to consult with themselves and their ultimate product. And, you know, if they're comfortable with increasing or, or decreasing, that's up to them. But if they don't change it, we, we rate it on what's presented to us. But we certainly bring it to their attention, um, as we're reviewing it with them and, and, and their consistency, so.
Okay.
They have the opportunity to address it.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Phillips, any questions? Ms. Bishop?
No.
Um, okay, so, uh, is our applicant available? These are typical state your name and address again.
Sure, if I can remember it, yeah. Uh, good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Collier Marsh with Parker Poe. Three oh one Fayetteville Street, uh, here on behalf of the applicant. Uh, have a number of representatives of our development team, uh, from Lenar and McAdams to answer any questions that you may have. This is the Homestead at Bryan Farm Project. Um, we talked about the site and surrounding area already. I'll move through that quickly. This is designated as a neighborhood on the comprehensive plan calls for. Within the comprehensive plan, a mixture of, uh, options here, you could have single family townhomes up to multifamily depending on the, the location and context. And it's an area to strengthen. Um, so to kind of take a step in back in time as to how we got to the point we're at today. I think it's really important to tell the story of this project and how it's evolved through the review process. Which is that we spent, uh, almost a year under review in the old comprehensive plan. Um, and had worked with staff to get some pretty solid consistency there. Uh, but in our final review, heading into the town council public hearing, we transitioned to the new comprehensive plan, which frankly looks at. Single family development in quite a different light. So it was a bit of a curve ball for us. And, um, after expending a lot of resources in the project, we were, we were forced to pivot in a, a way that we had to determine. So we were faced with a number of, um, comments that were of a different kind of nature than what we've been working through. Not only on this project, but on, on the many Lenar projects in the past that have come through the town. Um, so when we arrived at council on that initial project, um, what you see here on this slide was the original proposal. So it was single, so we, again, the site, we've got a paralelized easement running north-south through the site that creates a pretty clear break in the neighborhood. Now, north of this property, you have existing neighborhoods. On the left-hand side, we have an existing single family detached neighborhood. And on the right-hand side, we have a townhome neighborhood. So it made sense to us with that break between those to follow that same development pattern, to have like next to like. To have townhomes next to the townhomes and to have single family detached next to the single family detached. So that's how we approached the initial development of the site. Um, it, it is front-loaded product. Again, that's consistent with what we see in the surrounding area. And under the old concert comprehensive plan, that was, uh, not an issue whatsoever. Um, so we worked through the review process. Um, then shortly before council got the new review under the new comprehensive plan and said, oh man, things are a lot different. Um, you know, there are a number of items that could be addressed here. But ultimately, there are some big picture items that really had to take precedence for us. And so, um, one of the things that stood out to us at council, so there are a couple of comments. Um, weren't necessarily, uh, related to front load or, or the size of the lots. But the two comments that stood out were, can you switch the single family to townhome ratio? So in this iteration, we were at seventy percent townhomes. Uh, the comment from council member Vance was, I, I'd like to see that a lot closer to forty percent townhomes, uh, which is a pretty heavy ask. Uh, an alternative ask was, well, is there a way if we're going to have this density to integrate commercial into the site? So, um, we just were open to all suggestions. And what we did was we, uh, left council and we kept the hearing open for several months while we went back and made changes. Figured out what made the most sense. Does it make sense to add commercial? Uh, to support commercial and still be able to take down the land and land price, we need density. So is the better case a project that maintains density and maintains townhomes and adds commercial? Um, or is the better case to hear the comment on townhomes and make a drastic change? And so what we did is we went to exactly what was asked for, which was we made a drastic change in the units. So we got below forty percent townhomes. So again, we had seventy percent townhomes and the ask was, could you get close to forty percent? We got to about thirty-nine percent. Uh, so it's a major change. Um, but, but we did it intentionally because we thought of all the, the potential ways to adjust the feedback, it was the most meaningful. Um, when we're asked to address, you know, comments about, you know, can we make townhomes rear load or to make? I think when I hear a detached garage for a single family home, I'm hearing rear load again. So if we're doing rear load on those homes, we're again taking up more developable area and that. Yield on the site just continues to plummet and continues to plummet. Um, so we had to make a choice as to what was the best way to get to a yield that works and addresses the comments. And so that's how we got to this point where we said, we know we've got a good product here. The best thing that we can do and the biggest change that we can make is to do a drastic change in the unit mix. And to go from predominantly townhomes to predominantly single families. So I think that context is helpful to understand that we were faced with a number of different options and factors. And ultimately, we made a major change. It put us at the breaking point, but we thought addressed the most important comment that we heard and the one that we heard the loudest. Um, so that's how we ended up with this new layout. Now to the unit count question and, you know, what controls the conditions or the master plan. Yes, the conditions ultimately are the controlling factor, but the master plan is binding. And so the only thing that is allowed to change from a master plan, you have your minor deviations that can be done by staff. But if we have a major. But if we have a major deviation, something changes in a major way from this, we've got to go back through the process. So this still holds firm in a lot of ways. And so that flexibility is really only meant to account for a couple of situations. So we haven't fully engineered the site. We don't have a detailed subdivision grading plan. You know, maybe in doing so, things shift a little bit and a lot opens up here or there. There's also an old farm pond on the site that's a bit of a liability. If that's drained and somehow it opens up the opportunity to put a couple of units there, that's a possibility. So that's what that is meant to do, is just account for a couple of changes that could happen at the next phase. But in the end, what you see essentially is what you get, subject to a couple of tweaks on the boundaries. Will we get nine more units? No, there's not really a chance. And so maybe that number's too high. But to us, it wasn't a major priority, it wasn't a focus. It's just because it was confusing, it's led to a lot of discussion. But ultimately, we have a much reduced uh density here. So I know there's some commentary, is R eight the right zoning for the site? Our density here is two-point-five-eight acres. This is not an R eight development that's maximizing. This is a context-sensitive development that matches patterns and preserves open space. Uh, in doing so, sometimes in preserving open space, uh, and not touching every square foot, uh, you have to have smaller lots to accomplish that. So this just summarizes those updates that we made. Again, it was a major shift for this team after working for a while. Um, so that reduced density, that's the max permitted, uh, went from three-ten to two-sixty-five, so a forty-five-unit drop. Uh, we flipped that townhome to single-family ratio while dropping it. Um, we enhanced the architectural commitments. And so again, we had a list of architectural commitments, but I think as this planning commission has seen, um, there's been increased scrutiny on development in Garner. We've looked at what's worked in the past and what hasn't, and we've learned from it. I think the um, there are a couple of recent cases that have really had thorough lists of conditions. And so what we took was uh the highest bar that's been set by recent development and the list of recommendations from staff, and we incorporated all of them. Um, so we have a really robust list of architectural commitments. Um, we also worked with staff extensively to enhance the greenway and sidewalk network. Uh, so there are, I think, a couple of different teams meetings where we sat on the computer with Jeff and Aaron and kind of drew where things could fit and where they couldn't and what constraints we had and and made meaningful improvements to that greenway network so that we're not only creating a better circulation pattern within the site, but we're aligning with existing greenways uh to the south of the site and aligning so that connections can be made to the future park to the east. So so some pretty meaningful improvements there. Uh, and we also worked on our open space and amenities commitments, which I'll recover. Um, so it gets us to the zoning conditions. And not only did we drop units, but we really bolstered these conditions in a number of ways. I know there's there's some commentary about the physical type of single-family and townhome product. Um, but but the result of all these changes is that this puts it at the top of the market for what Lennar offers in in the triangle. Uh, so top-of-the-line in townhome products and top-of-the-line in single-family detached. So that really does give you a high-quality product. Um, we clarified that we would certainly be making this contribution to that white oak uh Bryan corridor improvements from the Pulte project that came years ago. Uh, the only reason that was an addition is because we're hoping that that would be a little further along and we could actually say exactly what it was going to be. But instead, we have to keep this, we will do our share, consistent with the development agreement. Amenities, you know, we do have extensive amenities, which I'll show on the the subsequent slide. Um, we have programmed pocket parks that are meaningful and useful that we'll show. Um, we did add a playground, we will have a dog park. Uh, and for those playlons, we added commitments to create boundaries so that you know it's a defined space or it doesn't just look like an open field that's flowing into someone's yard. It does have, you know, a unique identity. And then this is where we just get into extensive architectural conditions. Uh, we went through all the recent projects and added a number of architectural commitments. If there are any questions on these, we're happy to answer them. But I think that the best way to explain it is that we we put them all in there. Um, so open space is always an important consideration. Again, I think we we often see that one of the um, I guess, ways that you can develop a site is you can preserve more space by having smaller lots. Uh, and so that is one of the uh outcomes of this project. You you don't need to squint too hard to see that roughly half the site is preserved open space, um whether it's passive or active. And there is that large easement running right through the middle of the site that is open space. Um, this slide also just does show the pedestrian network and and how enhanced it has become um with multi-use paths running along the project frontage, providing connections to future park to the east and aligning so that we can connect to the greenway to the south and to the north. So those were much improved and and worked hand-in-hand with staff to do it. But we're not just trying to take advantage of undeveloped area to claim our open space. We do have meaningful, active, open space. We've heard it over and over again that in these neighborhoods, if you're doing the smaller lot, you have to make sure that you have some sort of a central area so kids can play. Uh, and this project accomplishes it. Uh, on a scale like this, it's hard to tell exactly what you're getting. They may look like small spaces, but when we zoom in, they're not. And so this is on the left side, to the west side of the power line easement. Um, this shows those pocket parks. Um, so the one on the upper side of the slide is about point-seven acres. But for reference, we stuck a U-ten soccer field in there. That's a genuinely usable space. Um, that's large, it's central to the that part of the community, and it does address the commentary we've heard about providing these open playfields and actual usable open space. And we have to resist the temptation to overprogram it. And that's happened in the past where we'll put gazebos and all these things, then we're going to have an open field so kids can actually play. Um, so we've also got the Pocket Park B, about point-two acres. That's really more of a stopping point along the internal uh street network and trail network. Um, so more passive, but still open, uh, and I know available for recreation. Uh, dog park location would potentially go within that power line easement. Um, there's a lot of open space there, might as well take advantage of some of it, especially if you've got walking trails through there. Moving to the eastern side of the power line easement, again, showing those pocket parks. I think, you know, we looked at the new comprehensive plan, it talks about designing projects around a central open space. It's a little hard when the center of your site is a power line easement that bisects it. But on this side, at least, we're able to have a more core of open space near that main amenity. And you've got ample passive open space in the stormwater ponds near it. But you've got walking trails and you've got a meaningful main amenity that I'll show you a rendering of soon. Um, but also good open space with trails around it. So we've we've concentrated it and we've also created that open playfield. That's about point-eight acres, again, showing you the soccer field there for reference that is usable. It's a large, kids can actually play there. And it's not just going to look like the continuation of someone's backyard and get lost in the shuffle. It will have trails to it and it will have a defined perimeter with landscaping that's one of our commitments. This is a rendering of that main amenity. This was done for this project, just to show you kind of all the components that can go into that one site and envision all of that passive open space behind it and the walking trails on either side. So you've got your clubhouse, your pool and your playground, all in one central area. Uh, these are elevations for the products that we have here, although um we've made some pretty substantial updates to the architectural commitments and tasked Lennar with going out to get some pictures of some better representative images. So don't look too closely. This was the base model uh for what we're envisioning here that have gone through, as you saw through those red lines, major updates. Um, and then the last piece of this project is that old farmhouse that's on the site, near the corner. Um, that will be maintained with this project. It will become part of the Homeowners Association, which will require it to be up-kept as part of the neighborhood and meet all of those same standards. Uh, but it is exempt from the architectural commitments to avoid any confusion, it should stay the way that it looks. Um, this home also does dictate some of the comments we've heard about, you know, can you add commercial on this site? If you're going to put commercial, it would be on the hard corner where this home is located. So you had to make a choice. Uh, and that's why, among the many reasons, we decided that the best major change was to go from that townhome predominant project to the single-family detached. Um, so a big shift, but we've worked pretty hard. Uh, we've got a team here to answer your questions. Uh, so thank you.
Okay. Do we have any questions for applicant at this time? Ms. Lennar?
So the natural pond is or is not going to be drained?
So it's not, there's the pond that we're referring to would be, can you see up here? I think it's right in that location, right, Tucker? Uh, so it's an old farm pond. It's frankly kind of a liability and would be drained, yes. But the the stormwater, the ponds you see here are the stormwater ponds that there will be three.
So there there was no means by which you could use that pond and adapt it for stormwater control use? Was it a matter of slope or terrain or it just was in the wrong spot?
Yeah, all of the above. I mean, the issues, I think if you talk to Lennar's risk management folks and they see an old farm pond and they don't know, they don't have engineering specs and things like that, they're not going to build houses near it. And the safest thing is to drain it and redo.
Okay.
I've got uh some comments and questions. Um, really appreciate the pocket park dimension diagrams. Those are very helpful. Like to see that more often. Um, I really like all the sidewalks, walking trails and paths. Uh, that interconnectivity is really good, I think, on this project. Uh, I like the fact you've got two playlons and four pocket parks. I'm a little disappointed that you only have one dog park. And perhaps I could consider adding another dog park over near the pool center somewhere uh because you have parking there. Where you're proposing the dog park in the easement, I don't know where you would park there. That's going to be a long walk to get to that area. And I don't know if there's some way to enlarge that cul-de-sac to make some parking spaces off to the side or put a little six or eight parking spaces there perhaps. Um, and hopefully those are, they'll have water access for the dogs there as well. Um, appreciate all the road build-outs uh around here. I do have a question on the lot size. Uh, Ms. Joseph had mentioned the lots were five thousand square feet at just under a quarter acre. Quarter acre is almost eleven thousand square feet. So is it, are they just under eleven thousand or is it five thousand?
Yeah, they're forty-five by one-thirty, they're fifty-eight hundred square feet. It's a dimension that's permitted in the R eight district. I I, as I understand the comment, it's that when you have that with the preferences to essentially have a rear-load um so that if it's going to be narrower, then you have kind of that front facade and the garage in the back. We just ran into a breaking point here when we dropped the number of units in the manner that we did. The ability to go back and then put in rear-load, which takes up more site throughout, kept dropping units and units to a point that we just can't go. So we appreciate the comment and we understand the nature of it. Um, in the end, this project, the way it works for us, will be front-loaded. Um, but we just tried to then overload the front-load with architectural commitments to to get some better comfort with the product.
Is the intention, and I hope that this is correct, but the intention is not to have any on-street parking available?
Uh, I believe that there's requirements for some on-street parking, but it's not like for guest spaces, is that right? Townhomes would have some guest spaces. Uh, so at the master plan, that's one of the things that you don't necessarily put is where those guest spaces are. But no, it's not lined, street parking or anything like that. There'd be designated spaces in certain areas.
Um, one of the thoughts I'm having here is if you go to page four and and item two, it talks about maximum two-hundred-and-sixty-five. You have a hundred and seven townhomes, a hundred and sixty-seven family. That's two-seventy-four. And then you go to page five and you got one-fifty-eight and ninety-eight on the diagram, which is two-fifty-six. So.
Yeah. I'm I'm. Yeah, if I, yeah, I can explain that. So again, what we're showing, two-fifty-six is most realistic and it's the best that we were able to do with an engineering team that was trying to put every lot we could. Um, we had put the ability, that flexibility, that two-sixty-five is nine above what we're showing on the plans. Uh, we just put a number. We often do that. We just say, we'll put a little extra in case we find some ability to put a lot in. Nine was the number, it wasn't too much thought put into it. Staff commented, well, we need to know how that extra can be allocated. And the answer was, and it was Mr. Trezenberg's suggestion, just say that either the townhome count or the single-family count could go up by nine, but in no event could the cumulative account go up by more than nine. So that's why those numbers, and and they go from essentially, they're eighteen above, if you add those up, eighteen above what we're showing on the plans. By all likelihood, we're at what we're showing on the plans. If there's a need to narrow it down, reduce that, that's not a problem. It just, I think that it was more confusion that led to the discussion. Um, and it's it's become a big issue, bigger issue than it was ever intended to be. What we're showing is what we intend. If that's what we need to confirm, we can do that.
Would would you be agreeable or open to if the motion is made to approve it, to go with the diagram and the one-fifty-eight single and the ninety-eight townhomes?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and I have a question, and I'm not sure if this gets directed to Ms. Joseph or Mr. Trezenberg. Was there any questions from the few residents that showed up that stands out? Pros or con, because we don't have that handout, but since this is a tier two.
It was predominantly the property owners and their family. Uh, there weren't any real neighbors uh in attendance.
Okay. That's all I have, thank you.
Ms. Phillips? Ms. Bishop?
Um, yeah, um, so are you able to provide a little bit more clarification on the house that you mentioned the HOA would take over? Um, I guess what the plan is and whether, like, I guess scheme is probably a little bit more detailed.
Yeah, it it, so it will essentially be uh subdivided, created as part of the community and part of the HOA and be sold to a family. Um, so it'll be subject to all the covenants, they'll be required to maintain it, um, meet all the, you know, house maintenance standards and they'll have access to the amenities. So it just becomes part of the neighborhood.
Okay. Um, and then you answered my question about the parking. Um, and so is there only one entrance or is there's two? It was kind of hard to tell on the graph. Um. Yeah, so is there only one or two?
Yeah, so there's one on Hebron Church Road and then there's a second one on Clifford. And then we also tie into both of the existing communities to the north, so.
Gotcha, okay.
And and on the parking, I think if I understood the question, as as the discussion went on, I kind of figured out where you're getting at. So the staff holds their feet to the fire to make sure that there's sufficient off-street parking, whether through garage or or driveway dimension, so that is satisfied here as well. Um, so the the spaces we're talking about are those extra guest spaces for the townhomes that are required to be accounted for on the street.
And what about the single-family?
So a single-family, you have sufficient parking within the single-family, if I understand. There's not an additional guest space requirement, is that right, Jeff?
That's correct.
And then one other, so a comment, I actually, I love the greenway connection. Um, do you know where it leads, like?
So we tie into existing greenway to the, Jeff, do you want, to the north, there's existing greenway. There's a greenway connection down here. Then I think the most interesting one is we come along Clifford Road up to Hebron Church Road. And you'll probably have a crossing here to go across to get to the park. But we also made a little punch out here in case there is somehow an opportunity for a mid-block crossing. We think unlikely, but at least it would be possible to go straight into the park.
Yeah, originally, um, very good. Originally, in one of the earlier versions of our uh greenway plan, the the power line easement was identified as a corridor. Um, in subsequent versions of the plan, we were like, well, that's kind of, it's convenient, but it's not the most pleasant place. Um, but we've just had so many projects come in that have been building different parts of that that it really didn't make sense to completely drop it either. Um, in new versions of the plan, we have a greenway uh side-path corridor identified along Hebron Church. So you kind of have a situation now where we've got two parallel facilities. Um, one will be more nature-y, um, the other one will be more of a side-path on-road facility. Um, but they come together near the high school, which, again, kind of, I think is a good, good uh hub of pedestrian activity. So we asked the applicant if they would uh consider making that connection adjacent to Clifford Road between the two. Um, so the other development uh to the south, which is Oak Manor, that's par, that's just to the west of the high school, they are building a public greenway through their subdivision that will go all the way down to Swift Creek um and eventually tie in with the Swift Creek uh greenway that Wake County uh is working on. So this will become a very uh very big system, hopefully, here in the near future.
Thank you.
Hey, I got a couple of things.
Sure.
So going back to what Mr. Jefferson was just speaking about, about the the driveways and the garages. So it says that the units have one-to-two-car garages. Is that correct? What's the length of the driveway? So where is the house going to be located on the plot, on the property? And what's going to be your length of driveway?
I know you've addressed it, and the driveway length has to be sufficient to fit a car, right? It's a twenty-two feet?
Yes, I think the ordinance requires twenty-two feet at least.
And that's what you're going with?
Correct.
Okay, and and the only reason I ask is because I noticed that the the plots are are narrow.
Mm-hmm.
So, and what what's the width of your street? Let me get that, let me ask that question.
Bring Jessie up, she's far more qualified than I am.
Hi, Jessie Hardisty with McAdams. Um, the streets are either.
Um, the streets are either fifty or fifty-five feet wide. They're for right-of-way, which includes your street section and your sidewalks, depending on um how much traffic is going through. But fifty to fifty-five feet.
Okay, because what I'm getting at is if you've got a one-car garage, you've got a one-car driveway, a guest parked on the street, your across-the-street neighbor has the exact same situation. So you've got two cars there and an emergency vehicle needs to get through. How, how much congestion is that going to create and is that going to be an issue?
So the, the minutia of it, I, it may not be the expert on, but I know that Jeff has put us through the wringer to make sure that that doesn't occur, is that correct, Jeff?
Um, so I think part of it is if you have a one-car garage and a one-car driveway, we don't allow that to count as two spaces. Um, because the, the one is blocking the other. So I think in these situations, they'll have to be two-car garages. Um, and if they're not, then there'll need to be other accommodations made.
Okay, so at least three cars in the yard. Two in the garage.
Two in the garage and.
Three-car spaces.
Right, right, right.
Whether or not they use them, right?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect, okay, great, thanks. And then um, second question, I didn't see in here about affordable housing units. Does this plan include affordable housing units?
It does not, but it's been discussed. Um, it was discussed at some length and kind of the, the views that we've heard from council are that um affordable housing is a priority. Town also needs to be cognizant of its cost of services. And so we also need to be thinking about making sure that we have projects that generate enough revenue to offset the cost to serve those projects. And then we need to find projects that raise that tax base enough that it allows us to do affordable housing everywhere elsewhere and take that hit. So this is viewed with all the architectural commitments as one of those projects that raises the tax base to allow the town the opportunity to take the hit or the sacrifice and to have lower tax base on affordable housing projects. So it was discussed and ultimately through those discussions, we kind of trended towards, I think, with, with support and hope of council that, okay, well then let's just make sure these are the nicest possible ones. And so actually, one of the changes that I didn't articulate very well or at all um is in making the change from this layout to this one. Uh, there were product-type changes. And so we went from twenty-two and twenty-six foot townhouses to twenty-two and twenty-eight. Twenty-eight's the largest, the nicest that Plinard offers. Similarly, we changed the models, I know it's not a condition, but it's the business plan here. We changed some of the models for the single-family detached to make it the top of what's offered in the market. So that was how we've tried to address those comments, is that this can be that step above that allows you the opportunity in other projects.
So with that being said, if I was to ask you, what's the price point of this subdivision going to be? Are you going to tell me market value?
Uh, I would tell you it's probably well above market value. Um, so we did some analogs. Um, I think the single families, we looked at uh similar product in Apex was in the sevens. Townhomes were upwards of four. So this, this, we acknowledge is not meant to be affordable. It's meant to really bump off that cost of services uh in favor of giving the town the opportunity elsewhere.
Okay, and then the last question I have, the house that Ms. Bishop asked you about, the house that's going to remain in, is it remaining because of historic preservation? What is the purpose of this staying?
Yeah, I mean, there was commentary about the desire to preserve it and we're not really fans of taking out historic houses. And so I think originally we looked at putting lots there and we said, let's just not go down that route. Let's just make it part of the neighborhood. So it, it is a commitment to maintain it.
Okay, that's all I have right now.
I've got one, oh, sorry. I got one follow-up question on, on Ms. Avent. So she had asked about the width of the street and the right-of-way width was offered. What is the width of the street? Is it eighteen foot, twenty, twenty-four? Because that kind of comes into what she was talking about, parking on the street. If you're going minimum width, so you got an issue.
Yeah, so I, I think they'll figure out the width, but I, but I think what we're getting at is that if you have a narrow driveway, so you can't fit the required number of cars, then we have to provide parking elsewhere. And that's not on-street parking, but that would be, and it's not necessarily shown on those plans because we're not at site plan, is we would have to put little bumpouts and little parking areas that are true off-street parking. So we still need to account for those spaces. If the driveway, for whatever reason, isn't sufficient, it's just going to have to be with separate parking facilities.
See, I think that's hard to recognize from the uh master plan that, that may be implemented somewhere. And that's what, that was where my question really came from, parking for a single family. Because, you know.
Or, or the townhomes as well?
Townhomes are two, they're one part of the town.
Yeah, so all single families too, some will, townhomes will be one. So it, it's one of those things with the master plan where we've had that level of detail, but that level of detail becomes hard to actually translate at site plan to show those little bumpouts. And realistically, if we do it and it doesn't fit, it means a loss of units to make it fit. So that's where it would come from.
So at site plan, that will be, that will be accommodated for us, what we're saying. What you're hearing, what, what we're hearing, that we can uh trust that that be the case. Um, okay.
I've got one more.
One more, go ahead.
Um, would, would the developers be willing to commit to adding some parking spaces for the dog park that's shown and, and to look at adding a second dog park?
I, I think it's something we could look into. Yeah, I, it, it's the first time we'd heard that. Um, maybe there's dimensional changes. Um, I don't think I, I, we're ready tonight to say that, especially with where it fits. But I think it's something that if that's, that's important, we can certainly look at it.
Because it looks like you've got on that cul-de-sac some green space, ju- green space just to the north of that that maybe you could put in four or five parking spots that might be out of the easement, but I just wanted to ask the questions.
Yeah, it's the first time we heard it, so I, I'd like to have a quick answer. I don't tonight, but we can look at it.
Um, I think most of you all have asked some of my questions, so I'm not going to ask those again. But I will say, since we are upping the quality of these houses, I would, um, and uh your number twenty, I would, I would, I would, I would recommend that we don't mismatch um non-v vinyl with vinyl. Um, you, you're showing vinyl trim for decorative uh components. I think that if, if we're not using vinyl, then we probably should not use vinyl, period. Uh, with the trim is, so I'm just going to make that statement um for maintenance purposes and durability. But, um, uh, and I, and also number fourteen for windows, I'm a huge proponent of making sure that the sides of the townhomes, the sides of houses have windows for natural light. I know you this, that it is, you know, at, at least one window um on um each habitable side or each li- uh, uh floor. But I, I would, I would push to make sure that we, that, that is just really a statement, but we are always trying to provide more natural lighting and vertical um transparency on those walls so we don't see a big solid wall. We see that so often in some developments and it just is not a good look from the exterior, but it also takes away natural light inside. Uh, for people that want to live in a house like this for the price point, I, I would rather say, you say you have at least three, period, and you go up. But I can't tell you how many you have, but I'll just make that statement. Um, are there any other questions for applicants or staff? Uh, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak for or against this application? Okay, seeing none. Uh, we had our discussion, if there are no more questions, is there a motion for this?
I move that the planning commission accept the consistency statement drafted herein as our own written recommendation regarding the consistency of the request with the town's adopted land use plans and recommend approval of case ZZ MP two four, two-three dash oh four to the town council.
I'll second.
I'd like to make an amendment to that. Since the developers have committed to going with the uh master plan, site plan with a hundred and fifty-eight single-family, ninety-eight townhomes, make that a condition of the approval or of the motion.
Okay, so I guess that means, Ms. Avent, are you willing to, uh, 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 is that how we need to do that?
Yeah, I'm in the motion to include the quantities suggested by Mr. Carson.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we are, our motion has been amended and seconded.
All right, um, so we're accepting uh, or we're accepting the consistency statement drafted with the amendment um per the applicant um providing one-fifty-eight single-family and ninety-eight townhome units as part of this. And it's consistent and recommend approval. Um, so with that motion and amendment on the floor, we'll call the vote. Gina Avent?
Aye.
Mariah Bishop?
Aye.
Ralph Carson?
Aye.
Philip Jefferson?
Aye.
Sherry Phillips?
Aye.
Michael Voilin?
Aye.
That's six ayes, the motion passes.
Okay, thank you very much for presenting and for your time and uh taking all of our comments. Good night. Uh, reports from the planning director and then from the planning commission.
Uh, yes. Activity, uh, since your last meeting, um, at the second meeting in July. Um, just for your general information, uh, we did present a revised annexation agreement with the city of Raleigh. Um, we've had a longstanding agreement with them uh that basically runs from Lake Wheeler Road all the way over to the Johnston County line. Um, other than some very minor adjustments to that historical line this time. Um, it was presented and approved by both uh the Raleigh City Council and the town of Garner. Um, so we're happy to announce that we have that renewed for another twenty years. Um, also at that meeting, uh, there was a special use permit. If you'll remember the Bennett Assemblage, which is off of four oh one. Um, when you're going southbound, it'll be to your right, um, shortly after you cross Swift Creek. Uh, they came back for a special use permit for their, uh, one part of their apartments. Uh, that was approved. Uh, and then the text amendment uh for implementing uh some of the things related to the comprehensive plan within the U D O, uh, that was presented and a good chunk of that, I would say about two-thirds, was approved at that meeting on July sixteenth. Um, we did decide to uh take a small part of it and discuss with the council at their work session, just to make sure that everybody was on the same page. Um, so that second part of Z T A twenty-three oh two, that was actually approved on their consent agenda at the August sixth meeting. Um, so there was one small part that we did pull out. Uh, some of that was related to some modifications to what types of residential would be allowed in which zoning districts and some things, just kind of trying to line up and clear up a little bit more where the plan wants townhomes and what kind of townhomes and where we want apartments and where we want single-family. Staff asked to, to pull that, um, just so we could take a little more comprehensive look at that because there were a few uh things that kind of came up late in the process that we just wanted to be sure that we had thought through uh more completely. So we're going to be incorporating um those amendments into the next package, which we'll start uh drafting shortly. So maybe in about another four or five months or so, we'll have that coming back. Um, also at the August sixth meeting, um, the Wilmington Place uh project, um, at the co- I call it the confluence, future confluence of a realigned Wilmington and Creech Road, that was also approved. Uh, something that if you hadn't seen it, um, but you would like to learn a little bit more about it. Um, the town manager gave a presentation on the July thirtieth work session about the National Community Survey. Um, so that was a survey that was uh given out, it's a scientifically based, statistically significant uh type survey uh that was done here in Garner. And if uh there was a lot of good, I think, information that comes out of that, so I would definitely encourage you to check that out if you're interested. And the town's goal is that every couple or few years, we'll re-administer that just to uh see how we're doing, how residents feel we're responding to things. Uh, but this gives us a good baseline now from which to measure going forward. Um, also, the planning commission, you were appointed as being in charge of the pedestrian plan. Um, so staff, we're going to be meeting about uh some different things of how to keep improving our staff reports. Uh, but you'll also start to see now a specific um little recommendation in terms of what's in the pedestrian plan. Uh, in some cases, it will replace um parts of the previous transportation plan and maybe also refine uh what's in the parks and greenways plan related to greenways. Um, so it, we're always kind of improving on those things. So we'll look to that as the primary resource for greenway and sidewalk recommendations going forward. Uh, but we won't completely discount the previous plans if there are some omissions or just, you know, lack of information in the pedestrian plan. Um, but this year, just a reminder to you that we'll be embarking on an update of our new trans- uh, of a new transportation plan for the town. Um, so hopefully we will be able to uh get a good uh comprehensive document out of that process and we'll be able to retire some of our old transportation plans. Uh, and that is all I have for y'all.
The Main Street project?
I'm going to look to Mr. Hodges to see. I, I'm aware of the plans being reviewed, but beyond that, I'm not as aware of all the details.
Good evening, commission members. Are you talking about the, the residential project that we were doing with our development partner?
Mm-hmm, with the baseball fields and, and the, the commercial component and.
Oh. Park at Garner Station, I think.
Yeah, what is it called?
Park at Garner Station.
Oh, that's just continuing to move forward in this process. So, you know, typically with something that large, it, it'll be some time before you see a- anything happening with it. I thought you were talking about a specific project that the town's doing in downtown, so that's why I was coming up to answer that for you, so.
No, the one that we kept reviewing and reviewing and reviewing.
Right, right. Um, what, what you're seeing right now, which is kind of occurring across their, their frontage is the city of Raleigh still replacing uh the sewer line that runs through there. Um, so that's why that part of Garner Road is still shut down. But uh, yeah, that project continues to move through uh its next phases of review with staff and some portions of it will need to come back to council for a special use permit approval.
Christopher Voilin?
This is a question. Jeff, uh, the corner of Vandora and Seventh, the KS Bank new building opened. What's happening with the old building?
Oh, just right over, right over here. Um, yes, the plan is, is once the new building is all ready to go, um, KS Bank will relocate. Um, their intent is to demolish the old building and subdivide the property. Um, so there will actually be two parcels there instead of the existing one. And uh it remains to be seen what that second parcel will be developed as.
Because going through my bank, First National, this morning, I wa- I watch cars go through the new drive-through there, so I figured that was open and.
Yes.
Just wondering what they're going to do with that old building.
Yes, it, it will be coming down, um, and eventually, hopefully, we will see plans for uh something new to go up on the remainder of that property.
That building isn't that old, is it?
I think it's been there a while.
I don't know the exact age of it. It's probably, uh, it's been there, um, probably at least twenty years. Uh, but there's some design issues with it. There's some upper story that did not have uh elevator service. There's been some challenges over the years of, of it being accessible and they weren't able to use the upper story for the, for the last few years. And so there's been a number of things that have just been problematic with the building. But they did open today for, in the new building.
Any other planning commission comments or questions?
I've got um just a note here. So uh, I'm the planning commission representative on the Affordable Housing Task Force and we had our first meeting on August first. That was just a very preliminary, uh, kind of setting some, some goals and some, throwing out some ideas. Uh, we've got um one meeting per month currently scheduled for the next five or six months and they may lengthen those or add some more meetings in, but just wanted to give you an update that that.
And they may lengthen those or add some more meetings in, but just wanted to give you an update that that task force has started. And uh, the next meeting is coming up in late August. So as some more things get flushed out, I'll share some more information with the planning commission.
Great, nice, thank you. It seems like that was already useful for you to be able to bring that feedback for our project. So we will definitely, you will be our person that we ask that about, um, specifically how we are planning to incorporate that. Well, if there is nothing else, I will call this meeting adjourned.